I'd like to leave some behind, probably more than I.
Alright, everybody.
Stay now.
Everybody ready? Good evening. I'd like to call the Winterville Town Council Meeting to order. Today is April the eighth, twenty twenty-four. The time is at six o'clock. Today, our invocation will be given by Councilwoman Smith, and after that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we want to take a moment this evening to thank you for our many blessings. We thank you, Lord, for bringing us together. We thank you for the town that we live in, and we ask your wisdom and your guidance be with us this evening as we do the work of our town and our community. We ask all these things in your Son Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, if we could please stand. The flag right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to our town council meeting. And before I start our council meeting, we have some guests out in the audience I'd like to recognize. We have Representative Dr. Tim Reader, and we also have out in the audience Chair of the County Commissioner, Mr. Mark Smith. If either one of you gentlemen would like to speak for a second, feel free to step to the mic. Dr. Reader, I'd love to hear from you for a second.
Well, I will take your time for just a second. So it is a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for the good work that you have done. It's really been a pleasure representing Winterville in the General Assembly over this last year. We're getting ready to go into short session, and I do want to apologize I haven't gotten here sooner. I was trying to get the rounds for all the municipalities over the last year, and they kept us busy up in Raleigh. And typically, we would start Monday morning or Tuesday morning, so Mondays became a little problematic for me. But I'm happy to be here today. We had a great meeting with you and the town leadership a few weeks ago. Talked about some of the needs of Winterville in terms of infrastructure and capital and some of the needs that hopefully I can advocate for on the state level. As I told you and the council or the staff a few weeks ago, there's not as much money in the short session that's going to start in a few weeks, but I will do my best to try to bring anything I can to help the citizens and help the town. So thanks very much for allowing me a few minutes, and if there's anything that I can do for you or any of the members, please let me know.
Well, we thank you for your leadership so far. We really appreciate it. And thank you for coming and sitting down and hearing our needs. We really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Mark, you have anything you'd like to?
I don't have any words to say, ma'am.
Okay.
I know a lot of people who are due to back soon.
Alright, I appreciate that. Alright. Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to our town manager for roll call.
Okay, good evening, everyone. As you all will recall, we are now taking roll calls as part of our meeting. So if you would take your remotes for the voting system and sign in that you are present, that would be fabulous. Alright, perfect. Mayor, I believe that all are present and accounted for.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Next is a approval of the agenda.
Mayor, if I may point out that you all have an amended agenda that was sent out the end of, maybe it was the first of this week. I don't recall, but you have the amended agenda at your seats. You should have gotten it also via email. So I would ask that you all approve the amended agenda as presented.
Alright, with that being said, can I get a motion on the approval of the amended agenda?
I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Orell. Is there any discussion? If none, please vote by using your clicker. Looked like the motion carry. Thank you. Next up, we have a proclamation, spring litter sweep. Mr. Clerk, do you have that available? Okay, can you read that, please, sir?
Proclamation for Spring Litter Sweep Week, April thirteenth through the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the town of Winterville is rich in beauty and natural resources, and whereas the town council, the town of Winterville strives to improve the quality of life in our community through enhanced community awareness, education, and the collaboration of public and private partnerships to work on projects that keep our environment clean and free of debris, beautify our neighborhoods and public spaces, and instill pride and a sense of ownership in our community. And whereas citizens of Winterville realize a cleanup effort is needed to display pride in our community for ourselves, our visitors, and for business prospects. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment capable of economic growth. And whereas residents of town of Winterville have a citizenship responsibility to protect and care for the beauty and natural resources of Winterville, and a countywide cleanup campaign will encourage individuals to participate in the improvement of their community's environment through the three main focus areas of litter prevention, waste reduction, recycling, and beautification. And now therefore, I, Richard E. Hines, Mayor of the town of Winterville, hereby proclaim, April thirteenth through the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, a Spring Litter Sweep Week, and urge the residents of our community to participate in activities to commemorate this event and help make Winterville a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. In witness whereof, I do set my hand and cause the seal of Winterville to be affixed this eighth day of April, two thousand twenty-four. Richard Hines, Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk, for reading that proclamation. Next up, we have a presentation of Safe Routes to School Grant Presentation, and we have with us tonight Dr. Catherine Dale, our Grant Coordinator.
Hey, so I came before you a few months ago. I didn't have an official role with Winterville at the time, but I am now your new Safe Routes to School Grant Coordinator. So we got this big grant from NCDOT to help improve active mobility of kids to school, teaching kids how to walk and bike safely, how to educating parents about driver safety as well around schools. So it's a very far-reaching grant. This is a little separate from that. So this is an actual infrastructure project. We were awarded ten thousand dollars to be a little mini-grant, quick-build project. And a few months ago, I came before you just asking if we had permission to sort of pursue the grant and think about locations and things like that. So we've made some progress on all of those fronts. It's a big group of people that have been involved with this. So we've had a lot from Winterville on our staff, but also from the National Center for Safe Routes to School, who helps to sponsor this program. We have our NCDOT colleagues who have already been very helpful in some early wins, which I'll talk about. And then we also have some folks from Pitt County and our MPO and the city of Winterville who have also been helpful in some of the legislative and other projects. So maybe you've noticed, we have three brand-new crosswalks in Winterville. They are crossing Cooper Street and Main Street along Church. Those are an early win for this coalition. So Anthony was pressuring NCDOT to install those during a meeting we had where we brought everyone together in one room, and they were installed just three days after we requested them, which is like completely unheard of when you think about infrastructure and how fast NCDOT moves. So that was a very cool early win. And these intersections will be the ones where we're going to do these quick builds. So what is going to go into these quick builds? We are going to install temporary curb extensions and high-visibility crosswalks. And the aim of these is to depress the traffic with pedestrians, calm traffic, and make pedestrians just in general more visible to cars moving along Cooper Street and Main Street, which have no east-west stop signs along Church and Academy. So I think I have a map in here that I'll show you, but I just wanted to, these are some photos of other quick builds from other jurisdictions. So they're, we're going to be creating them in a very similar fashion, so using high-visibility tape and delineators, all of which are removable in the future. They should last for six months to a year, is what we're thinking. And it'll give us an opportunity to gain a lot of community feedback if we want to make those projects and those improvements more permanent. So NCDOT is like, if they work, then we'll come back in and we'll do some more, you know, build those out with concrete and planters. That's the goal. So here are our three intersections. So Main and Church, Cooper and Church, and Academy and Church. Those little blue crescents, that's over our curb extensions. We are planning to paint them blue to match Winterville's aesthetic. So they'll be sort of like along with our Winterville blue. And you'll see that at Main and Church, we have just two of them. That's to allow for our emergency vehicle access. We worked with the fire department to maintain that access. So that is actually a very interesting intersection. That's not a common design for these. So Winterville's also kind of a leader in testing this structure out, kind of doing this catty corner curb extension. So we are like leading the charge with quick builds in North Carolina, which is very cool. So yes, we have our blue paint, our contractor tape. This is going to be the sticky work of those extensions. We have our high-visibility reflective crosswalks that are also constructed out of this high, very robust tape, contractor-grade traffic tape. And then our flexible delineator posts that are, you'll see these all around Pitt County. They're very common to our residents, which is why we chose to cover some other kind of structure. Our timeline for this, so lots happening in the next month to a month and a half here, but right now, we're collecting a lot of pre-installation data. So stop sign compliance, do drivers yield to pedestrians at these intersections, how fast are people going? All that's being collected right now. And we're also hoping to do some outreach through press releases, social media, the town newsletter, science, just really getting the word out. Anytime there's changes with infrastructure, we want to make sure the community is on board. They know about it. And talking to you all tonight is really good first step of that. But we're also hoping to use some of these other outlets. And then late April, early May, we're hoping to do some community installation days. So members of the community in the room, council members, you are all welcome to join us. So we're going to be actually like having community members physically do the painting and the tape laying. They're pretty straightforward installation objects, so they're very, they don't require a lot of expertise. And I think it'll be a really great way to have community members feel like they have ownership over their own streets. And then May eighth, I mean ideally, we would have these installed by May eighth, which is the official Bike and Roll to School Day. So we're working on that with our Safe Routes to School project as well, trying to work with W.H. Robinson and A.G. Cox to do some, getting kids walking and biking to school on May eighth. That timeline is, we could modify that if we needed to, so it would need a little bit more time. But ideally, sometime in early to mid-May, we'd have these intersection improvements installed. And then summer of two thousand twenty-four, and in late May and early June, we'd do some post-installation data collection. So that's looking at the same kind of characteristics, so stop sign compliance, drivers yielding to pedestrians. I'm a, I have a PhD in data science, so I like love the data stuff. And I think that this is another great opportunity for Winterville to be a real leader in showing that these intersection improvements really do slow traffic and make it safer for people using those crosswalks and intersections. And as part of this, we'll also gather that community feedback on whether people like it and want to see more of this or different intersections. So on the agenda, there's some discussion of intersections later, which I'm very excited for. So these kinds of projects could be applied elsewhere in our, but that's a little update. I don't know.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can help with this. And when I go across that bridge on the way to South Central, that little bridge, that dipped down. It's a really bad bump there.
Yeah.
I reported to DOT. I haven't heard anything, so.
Well, we could definitely.
I don't know.
They put some seal in it. They sealed the crack.
They sealed the crack, okay. I just, I haven't been back there because my car is so low with this. I'm a scrapes the bottom of it.
Yeah, one great thing about this project is that we're forming better connections with NCDOT in general. I think traditionally, it's hard for small municipalities to work with NCDOT. I mean, they're a real behemoth. We have the most state-maintained roads in the United States after Texas, which is a larger of a state. So NCDOT really has their hands in a lot of places. And I think that this project is a really great example of us working with NCDOT and making better relationships to like have Bix's and other students as well, because they own so many of our streets. Other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the intersections of Main and Church, Cooper and Church, and Academy and Church, how did these come about? And the reason for my question is that W.H. Robinson has intersecting streets off of Mill Street, which I have been advocating for something such as this great program. So I'm just trying to see how did these streets come about and what I can do to get them over near Mill Street, where there is heavy walking traffic, including youth as well as adults and the elderly.
I totally agree. Yeah, and I've talked to W.H. Robinson as part of my role as the Safe Routes to School Grant Coordinator. We had a really great conversation about their transportation challenges and what they view as issues. They talked a lot about the railroad, the rail tracks, and students being dropped off on the other side of those and walking across. And we're working on some, you know, future improvements in that area as well. These were chosen because they are, if you look at, some data sources indicate that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic along Church Street in particular, so not only youth, but also adults. And then Academy as well. So we have a lot of walkers who walk to A.G. Cox. There's fewer students who walk, so this project is specifically trying to improve things for students. We have a larger walking population to A.G. Cox currently than W.H. Robinson just because of the age group. So we were trying to target that school in particular to like help those students. They're also kind of in the same area, so we were hoping to sort of do a little bit of a joint project there. But I totally agree. There's many other intersections that could use these sorts of improvements. And we'll look at others in the future if these work, and it's a very low-cost build. So if we have a little bit of extra funds in the future, we could apply this somewhere else, too.
Dr. Dale, I spoke with South Central last week about a crosswalk coming out of, crossing four lines going over into Manchester. And I also spoke with Anthony, and Anthony informed me that, you know, you can't have a sidewalk going to Nowhere.
That's true. Yep.
So that's what led me over to South Central. I spoke with the Assistant Principal there. We had a real good conversation, and they are eager to help participate in, participate in putting a sidewalk on their side, because I said that we would probably be interested in putting it on our side, because there's a heavy traffic area right there for kids coming out of Manchester.
Yeah.
I also spoke with the guys at DOT when I was in the MPO meeting, and so they was.
That's one location that I personally would also, like, I was hoping to advocate for in the future.
Right.
So thank you for your work. That's awesome.
Yeah, so they're gonna, I reckon, talk with facilities, Pitt County facilities or whatever. And hopefully, we can get together. I said, you know, we'll be welcome to sit down and talk, tuck it out.
Well, loop me in if you want.
Oh, well, Anthony will probably be looping you in on it anyway, but so. That's part of, I think, working with the MPO.
Yeah, it's great getting these coalitions together where like people are used to meeting with one another, like know who each other are, and then, you know, solutions like this, that crosswalk, which I think is so important.
Yeah, because the other, other question that I had for him was basically some type of flashes in the morning, because traffic is so, you know, it's like a main thoroughfare going through there. You know, if we could just put up some type of flashers.
Yeah, I mean, one thing we do talk about, this is maybe getting in the engineering weeds a little bit, but the crosswalks usually aren't enough on like high, high traffic, high, um, high-speed limit roads. So like four lines is not, it's not like a twenty-five mile an hour street. So usually, we would need, that's why partly we're doing like curb extensions. Because originally, we were like, we'll just put in some crosswalks. And then we came back and we said, that's actually not enough. We need some other like curb extension, RFVs, which are the flashers.
Right.
A medium, a pedestrian medium, something like that. There, yeah, there's other ways to trap, calm traffic that are very important.
And also to, a sidebar for Dr. Reader to hear this also. It was good that you came, so you could hear that. Safety.
Yeah, safe streets.
Got it. My question is, you were asking for volunteers. Do you know approximately how many volunteers that you would need? And then if we can, you have ones that has an interest, who they'd need to contact?
Yeah, so we're working out the best platform for getting volunteers right now. I have like a SharePoint form set up and things like that. So that'll be one of the things I help push out in our press releases and our outreach in general. I'll take as many volunteers as I can, honestly. Yeah, I think, I don't think that I'll run into the problem of having too many. I think I'll have the problem of running into too few, if anything. So, yeah, I think it'll be a project where we're going to have lots of people rolling paint and putting tape down and measuring things. We're working with the police department and NCDOT right now to make sure those intersections are closed for those two-to-three-hour chunks of time that I'm looking at right now. And we're working with NCDOT about what the correct signage is going to be for that. But we're trying to target low-traffic times for our community, so just so people aren't really annoyed if they have to take a site to work. Yes, I will certainly let you all know when we have that board set up.
Thank you.
Mark? Yeah?
I love, I love that you asked that. So we actually do have sort of a separate project where the, the crosswalk to Nowhere issue is one that NCDOT, we did originally have a crosswalk for that intersection, but NCDOT mixed it in our right of way because there's no, there's no curb cut or sidewalk on the north side of that street. So what we're going to do instead is for Bike and Roll to School Day, we're going to do a temporary crosswalk, probably out of like charred paper or glorified armor, I don't know. And then have a walking biking, but a just public park for that day. So a one-day highlight, like a true quick build highlight. And then we're hoping to, like, the town and the church, and actually install a crosswalk kind of for put, for the sort of lower half of the country on that western side of that street. So, and NCDOT has already agreed to install high-visibility crosswalk, and we've got that sidewalk. So yes, that's why we're, we're hoping to, yeah, make, make sort of, that will be more permanent, which is great. That's another reason why we chose that intersection, because we heard that there were lots of students walking along out of it.
Thank you. I have a final question.
Okay.
So in terms of Mill, in terms of W.H. Robinson, in terms of traffic, of foot traffic, which I have been speaking about, what are steps that can be taken to put something in place? I know that there would be a post-survey in terms of something temporary as well. What are some things that can be put in place for pedestrians in those areas? And first, thank you. I know you are the voice of the program, and this is an amazing conduit between DOT and the town, so thank you. But my question is, what is something temporary or what, what steps can be taken to assure pedestrians on Mill Street and intersections off of W.H. Robinson for students, elderly, and pedestrians going to and from Dollar General and various stores? What can be done? What steps can be taken to assure them that someone is watching and someone cares about them walking in the street as well?
I love your question, and I love your passion for this. So I'd have to go and take a look at the roads, but I have a lot of ideas for that. So I mean, those include like installing sidewalks, which we, we more of in Winterville. And I'm not sure if there are sidewalks at those locations, but that's a huge one, right? Just provide the infrastructure for people to use, high-visibility crosswalks, like we were talking about pedestrian refuges. I love those. They are usually in the middle of a road, planter boxes, a little concrete structure, depending on the permanence. Those are awesome for sort of slowing traffic. But things like that slow traffic and make pedestrians more visible, curb extensions are a great one. You have pedestrians sort of more out in the center, taking back our streets basically from cars. We're so hard-dependent in North Carolina in general. So just thinking about how do we re-transform our streets for the elderly, for people walking, for people biking? There's a whole recipe book for this sort of thing, and it's so exciting because like I could take a look at those specific intersections issues that I haven't done. I don't actually live in Winterville, so like, it'd be great to walk around with you and like talk about some of these locations, for sure, because those matter as much as anything else, for sure. But yeah, there's, there's a whole litany of things that we could, we could test out or try. And it's just a matter of like getting the permission from NCDOT to do it. So let's do it. I'm down. I'm a guest person, so if you want to propose it, I'm there.
I'm proposing it, and I'll give you my contact information. Please take mine. Thank you.
And I'll just remind council, go ahead.
Councilmember, I just wanted to kind of touch base on several of the items that Dr. Dale has talked about tonight. But just with regard to Mill Street specific, let me back up. So these intersections right here, there was a survey sent out amongst the town employees, town staff, and other people in the general area to see where they had witnessed interactions. That might be of importance. So this was part of a grant application just for the ten thousand dollars. So this wasn't the whole, you know, town. So we had to submit, we created a hard, you know, how many, so. We had several different intersections. They were scored, rated, sent up to the grant administrator, being managed through UNC Chapel Hill, the grant money is coming from General Motors. It's trickling down to us, and so this quick-build project, like I said, is ten thousand dollars. We've identified a lot of things, but the Safe Routes to School is also looking at a bigger area on how to get children to the school. This was kind of low-hanging fruit. It felt like working with NCDOT, we could make some really fast improvements in these areas. Through this process, Academy Street, the church has already agreed to give us easement. So that process is in work, so we won't have a crosswalk to Nowhere. And then Mill Street specific is kind of outside of those two programs. We have talked to the UPO. We've talked to representatives at the state and federal level with regard to funding for a sidewalk on Mill Street. Of course, we'll have to go through DOT standards, because they won't allow us to just put crosswalks anywhere. We want to do it at the right place and make sure we identify and meet the needs of the area. And we know that's going to change when the shopping center opens up, loads food, things happen, and if you're going to have more people. Currently, a lot of people, they walk to the community college and they walk to the Dollar, the Dollar General. But once, when that shopping center opens up, you're going to see a lot more foot traffic headed that way. So we want to make sure we do it. Engineer has done preliminary estimates, has submitted to the MPO. The mayor's also spoke with Billy.
Jesus, Jesus.
So he has agreed to look into it, with possible grant funding, coming down the five-by-eighty-twenty match. So there are kind of three different levels to be built. So this presentation is for, you know, the smallest of the small, which is still very impactful. But this is for the ten thousand dollar grant that has already been approved. And the next stage will be the bigger foot grant, the Safe Routes to School, that will have a grant that will last about two years. And then the bigger process is outside of those.
Thank you for your clarification, and I think that this is a setting for that, for those questions, because if one didn't know, one can inquire. So thank you.
Councilwoman Smith.
Councilwoman Smith.
No, just a, a comment or, or something to think on.
So having heard why there's not a crosswalk here at Academy and Church, because there's not a sidewalk there, brought to mind something that I've been thinking about. There's been a lot of discussion about transportation and people walking in Mill Street and trying to get to places. And I think that, and a thing that we should focus on is to increase and finish out sidewalks in our town. And that Mill Street might be a great place for a sidewalk. There's a sidewalk, um, on Main Street, there's a sidewalk on Cooper. There's not one here at this intersection, so that would be, um, Academy and Church would be a, a good place to start so that we could then put in our crosswalk and finish out that. But with all the discussion of, um, transportation, like the sustainability of that, the number of people using it, may not be cost effective to think about a local transportation. We've had this discussion several times. But to finish out sidewalks, which would increase, um, accessibility to lots of things for people. Uh, would, many people nowadays look at a walkability score when they're looking at a town. It would increase, uh, people's opportunities to not just access stores, but to walk, to, to have connecting places, to reduce. Many people are concerned nowadays with, with the environment. So let's get out and walk. We are a golf cart frien- friendly town. But if we were to complete some sidewalks, maybe Mill Street, if that's something we could look at, starting, and starting here with Academy and Church, I think sidewalks would be a, a way to address several of our things.
Totally speaking my language about connecting sidewalks. So yeah, there's totally sidewalk gaps in Winterville. I've mapped out all the sidewalks. People have done some of that work as well, I'm not sure. But, um, yeah, there's totally like sections where like the sidewalk ends, it's just for a block. And then it like jumps across the street and then goes for a block. And that's the kind of thing that could be, yeah, solved with just like a block of sidewalks, which is obviously a much lower cost project than adding it on like, you know, all of Old Park or something like that, which is also important, but yeah.
So leave it to me to bring the voice of levity back to the discussion. Dr. Dale, I love your enthusiasm and we're so excited to have you on staff, so welcome. Uh, I just want to remind council that as we're working on these total projects, which are all important, that, uh, there's a cost associated with those. And as a result, I think through our budgetary process, we can discuss some of those. Uh, I know Anthony and staff at the operations center are continuously looking for mechanisms to fund some of these things. But again, prioritization, uh, exactly, there was a plan, a walkable Winterville plan done sometime. I don't remember if it was 2016 or so. Looking at updating that may be appropriate since there's already a document in place. So I do think and had hoped during our vision setting to get to some of these things. We didn't get a chance to discuss them, but just as we can move forward to try to get council to kind of prioritize as we look at some of these programs so that staff knows exactly what we need to be working on and where. Just say Carrie.
Okay.
I prefer, I prefer Terry.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Parker, right, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, just, just Terry, that's okay.
Real quick, if you could, um, send us or send council that walkable Winterville document to be able to review it, because, um, having those sidewalks, as, uh, Councilwoman Smith said, it also, um, brings back to my mind, um, you know, reducing health disparities.
Yes.
Uh, in our town, so folks can walk, they can shop, you know, play, eat and all those types of things. But having a walkable, um, Winterville sounds very good. And, um, as I had already discussed as well, the sidewalks for seniors, um, during, um, the time of just door knocking and just visiting our folks and our, our residents in our town, that was one of the things that the seniors talked about, that they want to be able to walk downtown. They want to be able to walk to certain places, but they just are afraid because there's that access and cars and things like that. So thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, imagine being a senior in, like, the reality of seniors in the United States is just, is generally that they are very isolated.
Right.
And that's hard as a senior. You don't want isolation. I could rant for hours about transportation and how it relates to health, but it's so, it's so important. They, they are so closely linked. I will also mention that as our Safe Road to the School program, so again, that's a separate grant that we got from NCDOT, there is funding in there for a bicycle and pedestrian safety audit. So that will pinpoint, specifically pinpoint locations in our community that, that need additional improvements. So we haven't gotten that started yet, but there is funding in our grant for that.
We thank you and thank you for your great work, uh, you and Anthony and the rest of the staff. We really appreciate it, um, getting this off and running with the $10,000. So, but... Next up, uh, we have a public hearing and, um, and Stephen will come up to the... Oh, you already do. I'm sorry.
He, he was excited.
Excited. Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Town Council. We have one public hearing tonight. It is the, it's titled on the map, Ludi-Ainge-Moore Family Partnership. It's a, a rezoning proposal that we have received. This is at 161 Vernon White Road, northeast, uh, corner of Vernon White, Mill Street and Winterville Parkway intersection. It's very close, actually adjacent to the properties that we saw, um, very recently at the Vernon White House. This is a 1.57 acre site. It's currently agricultural residential. They are proposing general business. Following state statute, we posted a sign on the property and adjacent to the right of the way. Nailed out letters for both the planning and zoning meeting and for this public hearing. Place two publications within the day we were in. This is the site, um, the 1.57 site. Go just south, you would touch the, um, Vernon White House property that we rezoned at general business a couple of months ago. If you go to, um, the west, you would run into the general business that we just rezoned, um, a couple of months ago as well, the property that was to the north of the Vernon White House. This is a map of the, uh, proposed general business rezoning. This is looking at the existing land use. Um, the site is right here with the star. Mostly around it is commercial, um, land use. Some vacant, commercial in the lighter green. And slightly, um, a small patch of single family residential touches it southeast here. Looking at the current zoning, everything around it for the most part is general business. There is a small, uh, group of, um, office and institutional just to the east of it. And just south of it, um, touching it slightly is agricultural residential, which is current. Looking at the future land use plan, the future land use plan suggests this become a regional center. A regional center to the future land use plan is high to medium density, commercial, retail or lodging uses that act as a regional activity center with offices. Residential could be mixed in with it, primarily auto oriented destination with large national or regional businesses. Looking a little bit deeper into the character area, again, these are larger auto oriented commercial areas that serve a regional market. Higher intensity shopping center with good design can be, you know, a great indoor/outdoor shopping experience. Potential zoning, as suggested by the future land use plan and comprehensive land is general business. Again, we're looking at commercial uses that have a regional nature. Looking at big box stores, chain restaurants and other uses that are highway oriented, such as hotels and could be multifamily at certain locations. They are not proposing multifamily, but you know, there's... Some of the land use goals that Winterville has, to strengthen and diversify the economy, encourage a balanced tax base while managing growth. So looking at the future land use map and plan and its character areas when considering land use decisions such as a rezoning. Encourage non-residential growth in form of retail restaurants, professional offices, industrial development in areas where the future land use plans suggest. Again, the economic development goals we have are to strengthen and diversify the economy. Emphasize retail, office and other commercial along, um, important areas, especially Winterville Parkway. Improve self-sufficiency. Help push, uh, Winterville from a, uh, bedroom community, as some may describe it, into more of a, um, self-sufficient city of its own, which I believe it is. Discourage rezonings to, uh, residential zoning districts where there are high visibility such as what we're seeing tonight. And then lastly, to focus on business recruitment, expansion and retention. So encourage local business owners to expand, uh, their businesses. I received two phone calls, um, regarding this rezoning proposal. One phone call was, uh, a resident very close by, had some concerns about noise, how the development could affect his, uh, property value, how it may affect traffic as well. Stated that they're neither for nor against the rezoning, but do have those concerns for just rezoning. And rezonings in that area in general. I received a second phone call from an area resident also concerned of congestion, traffic, noise, uh, crime and safety and property value, um, with the unknown of, of rezoning of these property, residential. Again, rezoning, uh, process tonight, we are at the public hearing portion. After I'm finished, we can open up the, the public hearing. Planning and zoning met on this matter and unanimously recommended approval. Staff also recommends approval of this rezoning as it's consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, the future land use plan, and is compatible with existing development and trends within this location. The staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request for the 1.57 acres from agricultural residential to general business as it is consistent with the land use plan. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
What about the infrastructure in there? Do we have what's needed to, um, support kind of development that we're talking about?
Next, we would get to the, uh, construction drawings. When they propose something and we would be looking at all infrastructure, infrastructure proposals at that moment. With the technical review committee, so we have our engineers, we have public works, we have all of our different departments that would be looking at that. I, off the top of my head, uh, I, I wouldn't necessarily know that interior, um, construction aspect of it. But we do have utilities all in that area.
For homes.
And, and commercial as well. Anybody have any other questions?
Yes, you did say that you had one that has a concern. And then your response to them was what?
My response to them was that I would jot down their concern and, uh, present it to you guys tonight for this, uh, public hearing.
If there's no other questions, um, I'm guaranteed to open up the public hearing, for the Ludi-Ainge-Moore Family Partnership rezoning. As you come to the mic, you will have three minutes to speak. And we are opening it up with anyone that objects to the rezoning request. If you would step to the podium, state your name and address. If you have any objection to this rezoning request. You may step to the podium, state your name and address if you object to this project. Okay, seeing none. Anyone that's in favor of this project may step to the podium, state their name and address if you are in favor of this project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Anderson, 2755B, Charles Boulevard, Greenville, North Carolina, 27858. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and we appreciate the opportunity to present this request to you. Stephen did a great job and gave you a really thorough presentation. I don't have a lot to add to what Stephen has already presented. Again, this request is really to fill in the hole, um, that is residential surrounded by a commercial tract. So the intent is this property will be recombined with the property that where the current Vernon White House sits now, um, and then it will allow for future development. There is existing infrastructure in the general area around us. We will have to extend some, um, water and sewer mains into the site to serve future development. But we do have some infrastructure in close proximity. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you have.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else, I, now we'll close this public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the board?
You know, but we've kind of changed a few things out in the rezoning proposals. I do have the motions, uh, for both approving and denying of the...
Okay.
If that is helpful, essentially if you're approving, stating something to the effect of considering the comprehensive land use plan. If you're denying, uh, considering the land use plan as well, but, uh, reasons why you're also denying. Thank you.
All right. So you have your instructions.
Right. I would like to move that we, um, accept the rezoning of this 1.57 acres from agricultural residential to general business as it is in line with our comprehensive land use plan.
I second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilman Moye to accept the approval, uh, rezoning requests. If you could please vote by clicking your clicker. Okay, all votes are in. We have a unanimous vote. It's approved, uh, to be rezoned. And thank you all for that. Next up, uh, we have our public comment section. And I think we have, we have two. And before, uh, we go to that, I need to, oh, thank you. I need to read this. The public comment period, uh, 30 minutes provide an opportunity for residents to comment on any item included in the agenda or to address the town council on any other matter related to the town of Winterville. For an item included in the public hearing section of the agenda, residents should address the council at the time the mayor invites public comments on the item. No public comment may be made to the council during the meeting except during the public comment period or as part of the public hearing. Individual speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes. And no more than three speakers may address the council on a single matter. The town council may elect to take no action on a matter addressed by a speaker, may schedule the matter for further consideration at a further future, I'm sorry, future council meeting, or may refer the matter to town staff for disposition. Copy of the town public comment period, I mean, comment policy, I'm sorry, are available in the rear of the assembly room. And tonight we do have... Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. First up, we have, uh, Rashawn. First up, we have Rashawn. Is it Rashawn? Carmen? Carmen? If you could step there to the podium and state your name correctly and your address so that I don't butcher it.
Good evening. My name is Rashana Carmen. I live on 2457 Chapman Street. I have a couple of notes if you guys don't mind me getting them home. First, I would like to thank everyone who immediately addressed the concerns I spoke about at the forum. The police presence was up in our area, and I could definitely see a change as far as the drug activities, so thank you for that. I've also gotten a lot of great feedback about the lights and the visibility from the people that live on Chapman, so that was greatly appreciated as well. And the lights were put up in like a day, so that was awesome, so thank you for that. It was a tremendous experience, so appreciate that. Also, I do have additional question in response to the lieutenant that, you know, addressed my concerns that night. In his response, he mentioned not being able to address certain concerns due to being short-staffed at the police department. Being that that is already a concern, Winterville is growing and will continue to grow. I guess I was wondering how, you know, the council will address that. I'm not sure who addresses staffing, you know, just to make sure that we have adequate staffing here, you know, enough police officers, and not only that department, but every department in, you know, the town of Winterville, to ensure we have qualified people in every area so that the town can run effectively and efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carmen. Next up, we have Mr. James Jones.
Mayor, council, citizens, my concerns are with flooding issues. Again, I spoke about this at the last town meeting, and after that, Public Works, Phil came out and gave us some ideas on how we can try to solve some of these problems. We did contact a couple of providers of services, but we did not receive any action from them as of yet, but we're still in contact with them. One thing I do have a concern about was with the building codes where the church is currently located, headed in. If they were followed, which back when I grew up, there were not that many building codes. We actually used to swim in the streets when it rained and flooded, and the church was moved over at the current location years ago. But now we have the building codes in place for, you know, to mitigate flooding issues, but it's like after the fact. So I know the town faced some drainage parallel to the church some years ago, and my concern there is, was it ensured that the water would drain towards those drains that the town put in place during that time? That would seem to might have been the best practice to make sure the water from the existing buildings actually flowed towards those drains, but they don't do that at this We are in, we are in touch with Canito Family Life Center, Reverend Joyner. They have a program that consists of different churches, and he's lending support and trying to provide some assistance with resources he's aware of to help us address our drainage issues. They're also providing different resources to assist us with our community garden, and so partnering also with us and hoping to partner with the town of Winterville on some of the initiatives that they're sharing through some federal programs. And one other thing, they intend to install a tonal garden at Mount Shiloh. We have some mental health programs that we're getting training on to help with issues in the community and some other issues going on.
About 10 minutes.
So any assistance that the town can provide to us, you know, we'd do a good...
All right. Next up is the consent agenda.
Go for it, Roberson.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Robertson, second by Dr. Randy Harrell for the consent agenda. Please pick up your clicker and vote, please. Motion carried to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to reference the last item, item, not the last item, item number four on the consent agenda to ensure that Councilwoman Hawkins saw that, and that will definitely, the installation of that three-way stop sign at Old Tar and Vernon White should address Councilwoman Hawkins's item under other agenda items, at least that intersection concern.
I did notice it, and it is a celebration for me. I did notice it, and I was going to wait to speak to that when my turn was up, but thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Next up is update on the human relations board.
Okay, Mayor, members of the council, this is the ongoing discussion that we have collectively been having regarding the Winterfield Human Relations Board, which, as we have discussed, has had a slight challenge getting off the ground and running. I believe at our last meeting, council folks were supposed to reach out with any ideas that they had via email, and to date, I have received no emails. So we, staff stands by, ready to move forward as council directs.
So I have a question in terms of the latest or the human relations board members that were signed on, the last two. I don't have their names readily available, but those last two members, could you refresh my memory in terms of their status and/or why they no longer wanted to be a part of the human relations board, being that they were new, and I don't know if they received, you know, got an opportunity to even attend the first meet, like a first meeting?
So, yes, ma'am, be glad to. The two ladies, it was Ms. Hamm and Ms. Hill, if I'm not mistaken, were the two ladies appointed, and they both have young children. And I do believe that that had presented a challenge for making the meetings. We reached out to both young ladies. I believe Ms. Hill has elected not to proceed with her membership on the board, but Ms. Hamm is wanting to stay and wanting to participate, assuming the board moves forward.
Is there anything else, Councilwoman?
Unless we have more discussion, I have more discussion on it, but y'all tell me how to proceed, or y'all, you guys guide me in terms of, I would like for the human relations board to remain. It is essential that it remains, and I can speak to that when and if given the opportunity. If that opportunity is now, I can speak to it.
Anybody else? Because the thing, we've been trying to field this board for a while now, and we can't get anticipation. So I'm eager to hear what you think that we can do to field it. If you've got some ideas or suggestions, I think that's what they was trying, the staff was trying to get at, to send the ideas, correct, or suggestions?
Yes, just to try to get a sense of where the council is as a whole in moving.
Right. And we haven't got any participation from them, according to you right there.
I have not received any.
Right.
Done.
Okay. So there, I'm complex about what we need to do. I mean...
Well, I think that we do have some applicants that already have submitted, and like a first and second. I think we discussed that in our meeting on Thursday, that we maybe, maybe we can go back and look at those applicants, are the ones that didn't receive their first or second choice, but had human relation as a lower choice, and they're in our activity and check and see if they might have an interest in it. That was discussed.
I would like to see us, I would like to see us invite those who filled out an application to serve and indicated human relations board contacted, and see if they want to serve. And this is April, so by May, as of our next meeting, all those would be contacted, and we would set, if we had enough people that said that they were willing, or if we had new applicants during this month, to set a meeting for, we meet on the what, third Tuesday?
Or Thursday.
Third Thursday. Getting me stuck with county meets somewhere.
Yeah.
And we would have a meeting then, and from then, we would be organized if we had enough to make up a quorum. Our membership is what, five, six?
Six, I believe.
Six.
The quorum would be four. So if we had enough of them to meet and form a quorum, then we would reorganize at that time.
Councilwoman Robertson, it's the fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday.
If I need to make that in the form of a motion, I will, if, you know, the board is agreeable to that.
Hold on for a second. Clerk?
I checked what applicants we had on file, in case there was a question like that. And there are six on file where they ranked it either one or two or the only one. However, I want to say some of those are old, and I didn't, but I did not go back and check with them till we've got something concrete to tell them. I didn't want to contact them, and then it, there'd be changes or something. But there are six applicants in the file pool, and one of those is a very recent applicant.
And we have one member already, we still have one member, though.
Three members.
Dennis, Councilwoman Hawkins.
And Ms. Hamm.
Yes, and Ms. Hamm, so we have three.
Okay.
Well, before we, before we, the six people that we have, I reckon tried to get this board going. This is just a suggestion that I've been thinking of here, is that I don't know if people understand what the human relations board is. And in order to probably to get them to commit to it or whatever, if we were inviting the people that had put it down to that fourth Tuesday, the ones that had initially or put it first, second, or third, if we could call them and ask them, would they be interested in coming in and understanding what the human relations board is?
And the commitment.
And the commitment, right. Before, you know, and then we can go from there, and maybe we can compile a board, once people know what it is and the commitment.
I don't have a problem with that.
Do y'all think that may work? Because, you know, I don't think people understand what the board is.
Well, as I stated in the last meeting, I serve on the county board, and Councilwoman Hawkins does too. You served up there.
Right.
You all know the struggle that they had, and that was why I said, well, they're having the same struggle that we had. But I have no problems with contacting the people, bringing them in, and letting them know what the board is, what it does, and what, and the commitment that goes along with being on the board.
There also appears to be, there's, I don't have anything in writing, but would encourage, there are potentially a variety of opinions on the council about council member roles on the board, what those are, how the liaison, you know, position works, and what that should look like moving forward. So while we're all trying to get this in order, it would be great to kind of bring those to bed, put those to bed as well.
Okay. Well, as far as, you know, I'm concerned, is that, that we shouldn't be only, we should be just a liaison to the, to the board and let the citizens, because if we're driving citizen participation, that's what should be driving this board, and we should be there as a liaison to the board.
And I thought about that, but then I looked at the county board. They have a liaison, and Mary Perkins-Williams actually serves on that board. So she actually is a voting member of the board, whereas Ms. Hardy is the liaison. So I, I haven't looked at Greenville's board, I didn't look at it, but I looked at the county board that I serve on. So we have a county commissioner who's also for it.
You know, keep beating this thing to death, but the thing that I looked at with the county board, and I think they did shrink it down, but when I was there, it was too many people. And we having a problem, can't even get enough people, you know, and so, but again, we always harking about citizen participation and making them aware that they're driving this train. That's what we ought to be doing. That's the way I look at it. I mean, not us, but I think the citizens, and I think we'll get more input, I think, if the citizens know that they're the one that's doing it, and we're sitting there helping them, encouraging them.
So I would like to say that I do agree with you, Mayor Hines. I agree with you in terms of educating citizens on what the human relations board is. How do we do that? How many ways do we do that? How do we put it out? So I did myself reach out to some citizens, and at first, they were eager, but a lot of them did not apply. Why didn't they apply? Maybe they don't know what they are signing up for. All they can go by is my word. What documents do we have to share what Winterfield Human Relations Board is? We do have a mission statement. We were driving for certain things to go on, and I believe that inviting them in to provide a presentation and maybe some pamphlets of what actions we are taking, what are they going to be a part of, will help to inspire them more. In terms of the liaison factor, I was more so an advocate, an advocate of council persons being a liaison initially. However, with Councilwoman Robertson being a part of the Winterfield Human Relations Board, I find that she is a intricate factor, right? She has a lot of investment in it. She has guided us, she has leaded conversations, she has lots of resources. So I believe that being on the council and as part of the Winterfield Human Relations Board and not a liaison, I believe that I'm currently on it. and not a liaison, I, I believe that I'm currently on it, and I would like to stay on it and not as a liaison. I would like to be able to vote on matters, and then that is a discussion for the council.
What is, what is y'all's pledge? We always, uh, right back at the same point.
I have a, I have a question for, um, Attorney King. Do, is this something that we vote on, or do we bring it for a motion, or so we can?
Yeah, I, I think, um, the, the town staff is looking for guidance from, from the, the council on how to move forward. So, if there's any specific, um, guidance, it, it probably would need to come in, in, in a form of, of a motion and, um, and, and council support.
I, I, I presently serve as liaison to whatever we got, you know, I know we, we haven't been able to meet, that's why I say, whatever we have.
Several months.
I, I don't mind serving as liaison, but also I realize that we have not been able to, um, take flight with our Human Relations Board, and I've been on it. So if someone else on the council wanted that position, I'd gladly take it. And, um, I'd gladly allow them to do it, and, um, I would just be, just sitting around watching your meetings, that's all. You know, I'd still come, but I wouldn't take part in a meeting because I'm not a member of the board. But I am a member of the Pitt County Board, so I do have that, uh, leadway there. Uh, my idea, and, and I've been a great supporter of the Human Relations Board, is that I do feel that there's a need to build bridges in Winterville. Uh, I grew up here, seventy-two years old now, so I've been here a long time. But I still see things that are still divided among our communities. I would like to see us become more involved across lines. And, um, you know, I, I've, I've had many opportunities because I'm on this board to be part of activities and to learn people that I would not have learned had I not been on the town board. And that's why I say, I feel that there's a need for that. Um, my daughters and granddaughters are part of the community, but, um, and I would like for them to grow up in a Winneville that I did not grow up in, and be part of a Winneville that I have just become, I feel like I've just become truly a part of all of Winterville. You know, so I do see the need, but if a council person wanted to be the liaison, I would gladly step aside and let them do that. And I'll just be a citizen, and I'll report to you from the Pitt County Board.
I would like to make a motion that we will invite, um, this, those six candidates, I mean, the six applicants that we have on file, have them come out and share with them the responsibility or the goals and what we have in place as a Human Relationship Board. Uh, and then let them know about the commitment. And then let them decide then, you, if they want to be part of it, and then we would definitely would know whether or not, if we would have enough to have a board. That's my motion.
I say that.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion, uh, by Councilman, Councilman Moy, and second by Councilwoman Robertson. But before we move on, before we move on, uh, I have discussion, and I'd just like to make a, uh, point, uh, here. Um, I was listening to Ms. Robertson, uh, when she was saying, you know, as far as devising this, but, um, I look at it differently because I'm sitting here as your first African-American mayor. Uh, I'm sitting here looking at a board that is basically a minority board. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but I also see where the town is headed. I think the town is headed in the right direction. Um, as you can see, you know, this is our makeup, uh, you know, and we got to put off, uh, foot forward, and I think the town is doing a great job doing that. Uh, you look at our staff, our staff is now more diversified, uh, I think than when I came on. Uh, you got, um, a lot of, uh, females in leadership role. So, um, I think we're moving in the right direction, you know, not combat what you're saying, but I think I see it from a different light, you know.
I, 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 you know, I agree with you. Things have changed.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to see them keep on going.
Right, and, and I do too.
I, I didn't mean those comments to say that we're staying the same, but I think as we grow, there's more and more, more and more efforts to reach across and to reach within and to involve our citizens. I would love to see our Hispanic neighborhoods represented, you know, so that's something that we can look at as far as, um, growth. But I agree with you one hundred percent. We've come a long way.
Well, with that, that was my discussion, so now we can vote.
Mayor.
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Y'all go ahead.
Mayor, before we move on, we've been having a discussion about the Human Relations Board. Uh, there was a motion made, uh, to have citizens come out, but I highly doubt that anyone i- at, sitting present knows what the mission of the Human Relations Board is, and I'm going to quickly read it before we move forward. That's part of what I would like to do. So the Human Relations Board, uh, has a current mission. The Human Relations Board has not been dissolved, and our mission is promoting a community of whole person wellness, dignity, safety, equity, and inclusion for all citizens of Winterville. And might I just add, um, in terms of what Councilwoman Robertson says, um, I, I, I agree with her that there is some more bridges that need to be strengthened, however, I do believe that we are stronger together. And that is why the Human Relations Board will sit as, um, a way in which we can move intricately in the micro. If we want the macro, we have to do the micro, and I believe the Human Relations Board is important for that reason. Thank you.
I have a question for point of clarification. When we invite these applicants and any other applicants in, uh, who will be spearheading the, uh, the information that's imparted upon these folks?
The town manager. Parker will present what a Human Relations Council does.
I'm happy to do that.
Please.
How, I was gonna suggest that sometimes though, uh, there may be others that can do it in a better fashion than myself, but I just wanted for clarification purposes, who council wants to?
And for clarification, if you find someone else that can do it, you have the room, oh, to get it done. How about that?
Ms. Hawkins has been on that board ever since its inception, and she, um, has the mission statement and some ideas, she knows what we did. I don't have a problem with her being the one to share. I would, um, also, I would be with her to support her, but I don't have a problem with her being the one to share, um, purpose of the board and, um, some of the things, you know, as far as, uh, commitment wise.
I'd like to say something. Um, Ms. Hawkins, thank you for reading that mission statement. Um, the Human Relations Board is the board that I started on as well, and I helped to create that mission statement. So, anything that you may need from me, I'll be gladly, um, you know, available to support you because as you all are saying, we do have to make sure that, uh, we are reaching across, uh, multicultural communication, um, in our town. So, I do feel that the, um, Human Relations Board should still be viable, um, and in order to get folks out, again, just to make sure that we talk to them, we are making it plain about what's going on with the board and, um, the expectations, uh, of that board. Thank you.
And I would love to work alongside of you, town manager, uh, Parker, in helping to launch what we would like to present to the people once we get a date set.
Sure, absolutely, and I'd be more than happy for you to spearhead that delivery.
Will do.
Uh, one more question and then I'll stop. It's not a question, it's more of a, a statement and maybe a, a request. Uh, again, in getting some of this information out to the public, I know of no better group than this group right here that may put together some item, written items to post in our newsletter, to put on our website, and to put out there for citizens to read. Staff's happy to do it, but sometimes it's the words that you all bring forward, and your passion behind that that really speaks to citizens. So, again, I'm asking for, um, please forward me some things, forward Dawn some things. We don't have a lot of space, so succinct is always really great, but I realize that trying to get a message in sometimes is challenging. We can put a link up there, but reading the actual words are always more powerful. But again, I, uh, am asking council to become some, uh, co-authors with us on some of this documentation, and I think that would be a really good way to, to speak your message. Thank you.
Okay, we have a vote. Please. We have, um, approval to pull together this, uh, Human Relation, uh, Meeting, Human Relation Council, Human Relation Board meeting.
Yes.
Fourth Thursday.
Yes.
Or whenever y'all set a date.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Thank you all. And the, the county board, the county Human Relations Board is meeting here in Winterville. They're put, going out on the road to the communities, and, and the date is July sixteenth, I think. Yeah, I talked to you Terry about.
Oh, no, I know, I just couldn't remember where they're meeting.
Yeah.
Where are they meeting at?
Here, here.
Yes.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to be, okay.
That's what you said.
I'll make sure, yeah, that's fine.
We invite, we invite all citizens to come and, um, talk to them, see what they're about, have questions for them, of course, um, during that time. But we will meet here at six.
What day?
July sixteenth.
July sixteenth, I think.
And it will be, uh, framed as a listening session. And we're traveling around the county and coming to Winterville in July just to listen to the, um, citizens, see what's on their mind, their ideas, their suggestions, just the listening, a listening session, and then they'll get back with any supports.
Uh, and how many members are on that county board?
More than we got chairs at the end.
Okay, we'll make it, we'll make sure we have enough room, but if somebody would shoot me how many members there are, that'd be great.
We'll do.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, uh, under new business, uh, NCLM Voting Delegate for the City Vision.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask our town clerk, Donald Harvey, to handle that, please. But this should sound familiar to at least most of you.
This is the annual time where we, you all need to elect a delegate for the City Vision Conference. Uh, the voting will be done, uh, virtually, I, uh, so it can, uh, as soon as y'all elect one, I'll register that person tomorrow, and the, uh, uh, information will come out to you, uh, shortly, and then you can do your voting for the town, uh, at that point. I'd be glad to, uh, answer any other questions. Uh, your agenda packet gave a little bit more detail, but, uh, that, in short, that's what we needed.
Mayor, go on.
Yeah.
I nominate, um, I make a motion that our mayor, Ricky Heinz, be our voting delegate.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Robinson, uh, second by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell, uh, for the mayor, Mayor Ricky Heinz, to be the delegate for City Vision.
I second.
I got a second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna pause there.
I was gonna say, click. I was gonna say, uh, click your clicker, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You were right.
Yeah, I was trying to get my thoughts together. Uh, motion carried, uh, Mayor Heinz would be the, uh, delegate for the City Vision. Uh, next up is, uh, solid waste recycling service and rate recommendation and Afnae.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight we have before you, um, the follow-up from our previous workshop, and, uh, so we have a solid waste corrective action recommendation to address problems with funding and operations. As you may recall, um, before the end of last calendar year, in early spring, um, sanitation services kind of came to a fever pitch with, um, the way things that they were, uh, being performed and the job that the contractor was doing. So we went through a iterative process and sent out RFPs. Um, but the issue before we get into any kind of contractual item, um, is to kind of talk about a recommendation that come from the, the workshop. So as you recall, we met on February twenty-sixth, um, and staff presented several options to provide relief for the problems that we were having, um, during the work session. At the conclusion of the session, it was asked upon staff to make a, uh, a recommendation. So, we concluded the meeting that night, and staff got together, um, looked at our situation, looked at the financial, items that we had before us that was presented in that meeting, and we looked at the operational items that were before us that were also discussed at that meeting. So with that being said, the staff made a recommendation, and with that, it, there are several significant changes, um, that we're recommending. And the recommending, recommendations are as follows. So based on the RFP that was sent out for our contractual services, there were huge financial differences in that, and then that's the next item on the agenda. But as far as this goes, we're recommending staying with the current contractor, based on several items. Uh, one, they would, uh, change routes to four days a week instead of two. Right now, we're currently doing recycling on one day and garbage on another. Essentially, what happens in that situation is the town has grown so large, they can't get to the landfill by the time the landfill closes. Breaking it up into four routes would just make it much quicker, uh, burst, so to speak, so they would, um, not be doing garbage on Friday, and so we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, cans getting missed on Friday and having to sit all, all over the weekend by the contractor back in on Monday. But, um, going to a four-day, uh, route pickup, we would, uh, and also that four days, the scent, the recycling and the garbage would be picked up on your route the same day instead of two separate days. So you're pulling both out the same day, and that, and you're not sitting there twice in the week. Um, we're recommending reducing, uh, recycling to every other week, so bi-weekly pickup for recycling. Um, and that will, uh, basically, hopefully curtail, um, a lot of the contaminants that we're having, that people know that it's not gonna get picked up for two weeks, that they will only put, um, actual recyclable material in there. And then one of the big issues that we discussed in our, uh, workshop was the fact that there were a lot of fines gonna be handed down for contaminated recyclables, and how the whole load gets kicked out, and then we get fined for the whole load. So we want to be, you know, this was a way to try to, you know, combat that a little bit, as well as reduce costs, dropping that service back to every other week. We're also recommending a change in the rate. As you know, um, we're currently at eleven dollars and fifty cents, it's been that way for a very long time. And so we will be recommending, uh, fifteen dollars monthly fee. This is, um, a increase of three dollars and fifty cent, and, um, essentially, we have, uh, it equates to two dollars and thirty-three cent per pickup. In other words, if you want to think about breaking it down in a manner, so each week you're only spending two dollars and thirty-three cents for the, for the garbage and your recycling, uh, which is a, a real bargain.
Hey, Afnae, I don't mean to cut you off there, but, um, can you kind of go over our neighboring towns, what their cost, or? I, I didn't know whether you're gonna, can you do it now?
Correct, yeah.
Are you gonna, okay, I'm sorry.
That was very nice, man.
Hi.
So, we also presented in that, um, you know, the range in local communities around us, we were at eleven dollars and fifty cent, and they ranged, the next closest one was fifteen dollars, which was the town of Aiden, and went up to nineteen dollars, I believe, which is the city agreement. So we did look at various municipalities, um, and looked at what they were charging for that. for that same service. However, we go a little bit above and beyond what those communities are doing because we pick up construction debris and we have larger recycling containers and we pick 'em up every week. Not all of those communities do all the things that we do. Um, you know, this, this fee also goes along with all of our other routes, um, solid ways, um, excuse me, bulk, um, grass, leaves, um, everything that goes into getting the debris out of the town and over to the county landfill. We're also recommending, um, breed, construction debris that is put out to the street by homeowners, not contractors. The upfront fee is one hundred and seventy-five dollars, it'll be a prepaid charge, and that's basically the average cost, what it takes to us, um, our tipping fees at the county landfill for those construction materials. That does not include maintenance on the vehicles or staff time, so that's basically just recruiting our landfill cost. And then, uh, tire pickups, that's a big problem for us, so we're looking at a twenty-five dollar fee per tire. And, um, you know, all of these changes will basically reduce our loss, as you may recall, our poller works department is losing about one point two million dollars, and this reduced that loss by two hundred and sixty thousand dollars by making these changes.
Anthony, just to clarification, uh, so, construction would be a scheduled pickup and so would tires, correct?
Right, you would have to, uh, just simply call town hall, um, make arrangements to make the payment, and then we would schedule that and let you know when you want to do that.
And again, how much you say this rate needs to increase?
Uh, to fifteen dollars.
Okay.
The recommendation is from eleven dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay, alright.
And that puts us in line with Aiden.
Right, that's what I was. Alright. Alright, where's the pleasure of our board here? Y'all heard, uh, uh, Mr. Bowers?
Rate would begin when? Our eleven fif- I mean, fifteen dollars would begin?
Start with the new this, we're in this. July?
July first.
That gets us time to get the word out.
Alright.
One other thing they did agree to, um, we can talk to this, but the, the contractor agreed to some other stipulations as well, so, um, make it more accommodating to stay with them, so that was why we didn't look at, plus the cost of the other bidder, um, was more than, I mean, twenty-one dollars, and so, we're, you know, we're only charging eleven fifty currently, pay twenty-one for pickup.
Operating backwards, alright.
So, we need a motion?
Yes.
No, I, I got a question before we go in, before we move to the motion. Um, if a homeowner leave debris outside the street and do not call, that means that you will not come by and pick it up, right? So, long they don't call, it can stay, is what I'm asking.
Well, if our, our staff sees it laying on the side of the road, we'll, we'll definitely communicate with them, let them know that that's either a material that we can or cannot pick up.
So, are you going to, uh, give them a citation, some kind of?
Well, we would go through a, we would go through a.
You gonna give them a period to get it moved, basically what I'm asking?
Yeah, I mean, we would certainly go through an iterative process, educate the customer, let them know, you know, that the material is something that we can't, we're no longer picking up, and then if they basically refuse, we would go through our standard remedies to, you know, address that type of situation that we have.
Wouldn't that, I'm just asking this question to Evan then, would it fall on code or something of that nature? I'm just asking that question.
It depends.
It does depend on what it actually is, but theoretically, if it was, let's say, if it was flammable in nature, yes.
Right, uh-huh.
Uh, otherwise, it's gonna be public works enforcing it, and the timeframe with which they would be given to remove it would be much less than a standard code enforcement letter.
Okay, alright, that's good to know.
Okay, and, um, the company that we have at the moment and that we just, uh, talked about a few minutes ago, that we had issues with them and it has been ironing out to a degree.
Yes, sir.
And they are on some sort of microscope to make sure that they would do what they're supposed to do, because there are, well, there was the low bidder, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what I saw. And I think I asked this question also in our meeting, that if, for what reason or another, they fail to keep up, um, their, um, what they promised us that they're going to do, and then we have to go back to the next bidder, and the next bidder is gonna be higher, right?
Sir.
So, we are asking right now for an increase based on the low bid. So, six months from now, if we decide, hey, listen, we don't need, we don't no longer need your service, so we might have to go and get that one last bidder that we do have, and it's gonna be an increase. So, that means that, so that means that we're gonna have to increase the fees again.
We would certainly need to, to keep financial solvency, yes, sir.
I, I do have a concern about that. I, I mean, I don't know why, I mean, I do.
Oh, it's a legitimate concern, I mean, we, you know, we're, had significant conversations with our current provider, um, and so, they've made accommodations that I can probably, I mean, I can even speak to them now, it'll just save time later on the next agenda item, but essentially, they have, uh, you know, we've, they've agreed to a six-month probation, they've also agreed to a two-hundred-thousand-dollar bond, so if that, if they do not perform, that bond is callable, and we would be able to take remedy through the call of the bond.
Would that cover the cost of the increase of the next highest bid? Why would, why?
We would have to reevaluate it at that time, I mean, I feel confident, if I, I feel confident that the commitment from the company GFL has made to us is, uh, significant.
I, I feel.
So, I, I feel like, you know, I, I, while I understand your concern, I'm, I'm really confident in their commitment, their level of commitment, the fact that they've came to us on a couple of occasions, they're calling on a regular basis, um, and so, they've made commitment in personnel changes, they've made commitment in, you know, changing out cans, they've made commitment in, um, basically everything we've asked for, um, as well as, you know, making sure that the operations are better and suit the needs of the town.
My concern is, increasing, if we, at this board decide, if they decide tonight to do an increase now, and like I said, if that probation period does not last, we, we looking at another increase, and that's not, I mean, you know.
This is definitely the most economical option.
So, we losing money regardless, uh, Mr. Moore?
Well, I understand that.
We losing money, I mean, the town is losing money, and if, you know, we sat here earlier, I think you're talking about staffing and everything else. I mean, you, we talked about moving forward with the town, and if we don't do these increases, we going backwards, and, you know, um, I think the citizens understand that we can let them know and ahead of time, that's why we're saying, that, uh, this thing won't go into effect until, uh, the fiscal year, which is July first, and that gives everybody ample enough time to budget for it. I mean, you know, um, like any household, I mean, anything can come up, and, you know, and so, you just gotta budget for it. Um, uh, I understand what you're saying, but in six months, there may be another provider that's out there that may come into the, the solid waste field that we can look at, you know, um, but we're banking on that this provider, since they're being so adequate and saying, hey, I'm gonna put up a bond, you know, I'm understanding I'm on a probationary period, that they're gonna do their best to, you know, uh, stick to it because they don't want that bond, 'cause that, that hurts their rating, and so, you know, that's what they're looking at.
And in all honesty, um, I, the other vendor's bid is probably very in line with what a lot of entities our size are currently paying. So, it was not, though it looks like it's a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, it looks like a big difference, and it is a big difference, but in all honesty, that second bid is not out of the realm of reality. It's very realistic.
So, um, question, what is the, um, increase with the other bidder?
Well, their, their bid was twenty-one dollars and fifty cent, and our current bid, low bid within was nine dollars and fifty cent. So, we wouldn't even, I mean, we would be losing, you know, six dollars and fifty cent with the rate increase, without the rate increase, um, not to do math on the fly, but, you know, uh, we had twelve dollars per customer. I think when I ran the numbers back in the presentation, it was well over a million dollars.
Right, that's right.
So, that increase would be how much, if, if you would?
Well, we're recommending.
Based on the high?
We would have to reevaluate it at a time, I mean, if we do a marginal increase based on, you know, what our losses are now and try to keep it consistent, I mean, I mean, to break even, it would have to be at least twenty-one dollars and fifty cent, so, that marginal loss, it would be somewhere, you know, don't hold me, do it be roughly eighteen dollars, somewhere in there.
'Cause that'd put us almost in line with what Greenville is, what, twenty-three dollars?
Are we into a Panama that we have to make a decision tonight, including we just table this until our next meeting, that we can have that information available?
May I just interject? So, the hope is that the current service provider that we're considering renewing our contract with will fulfill their obligation. The only reason that we would have to look at further increasing rates would be if they did not fulfill the obligation and we needed to go to a much higher cost vendor.
That's right.
So, at a time when people are very concerned about finances and things like that, I mean, I feel like the current recommendation is probably reasonable. It is an increase, and hopefully, we don't have to increase any further, this vendor will do as needed, rather than jumping, I, I think what the, the tendency here is, is maybe to go ahead and jump to twenty-three dollars, but then we do that, and that's a huge jump, and we're not paying, but, I mean, we're, I, I do realize we're still taking a loss in public work, so.
I, I like, I like to speak to your point, um, and I do agree with you, Councilwoman Smith, that if we, um, go with the vendor that we have, but in the spirit of transparency for the town, that in six months, if this performance bond is not met and we have to go to the next highest bidder, then the town knows why, the town of Winterville at this point knows why their, um, solid waste rate will go up, so.
So, it's been a, a, a long process to give citizens better service, um, and, and so, you know, normally, that does, even though we are making changes, um, I mean, cutting the recycling to every other week, that's in large part to cut fines, so we, you know, save money there, so there's a, it's, it's a lot that goes into it, it's a big ball of wax and, um, you know, the, um, but the intent is to certainly, you know, try to achieve this initial goal and, um, address the concerns that we were having historically as well as position.
And if I may say that and remind everyone here, and hopefully, all the folks that are listening, and as we move forward, um, we've been operating at a loss for a long time. This rate that we currently have, we've had for a long time, and it has not covered even the contract for a few years, and definitely doesn't cover anything the town picks up, so, I mean, we really have an obligation to cut those losses.
I have a comment. In terms of the probationary period, um, was there anything, uh, in the discussion to have a staggered increase, being, the reason being, and why is this important, why I'm asking this, is because there has been a history of GFL not fulfilling the things that they needed to within Winterville, with, um, trash being, uh, having to be dumped and having to wait in front of people's homes for several days. You all have had to put out several notices, um, but the citizens did, did not know that on the backside. I did not know until we had the workshop, and then I had a clearer understanding. That has been historical, it has happened again and again. So, with that being said, if you had conversations with GFL and to go into a contract, to go into a probationary period, um, while it's probably needed, I would, I would have suggested that something tentative be, been put in place as opposed to, um, either or, or a staggered increase, a, a small or slight increase during the probationary period, and then when that six months was up, then the total three fifty. That is just my suggestion, I'm not a, a expert at it, I'm a citizen-turned-councilperson, and that is something I think that some of the citizens would think as well. Was that a thought, like a staggered, you know, like during the probationary period?
No, it wa- it was not, 'cause of, well, the, the contract and the, so, you can implement the rate, uh, as however the council wishes, but they're separate and apart from each other. The contract with GFL is not necessarily dependent upon the rate structure for which, except, this could have been done, um, during the, um, the rate for that service can be done during the normal budget process. However, since it was such a hot topic and such it was in the forefront, um, and, and the thought of planning and getting, you know, things out in a timely manner, that was why the recommendation was as such. However, um, you know, the contract, your next agenda item is gonna be the contract itself, so, I mean, whether y'all accept our recommendation or decide to do something different, that's the council's decision. Then you wanna follow that up with the decision on the contract itself, which is, you know, doesn't affect the rate that we're recommending. It does affect, you know, our net income, our profitability, um, how much losses we have, but it doesn't affect the fact that we can do some, do them exclusively of each other.
And it does, those other changes, uh, recycling changes, four-day-a-week pickup, all of that goes into effect with the new contract.
Correct.
Cliff?
Not to step on Anthony's toes, but the sanitation rate is one of the few rates that every citizen pays, so a lot of our citizens aren't on our electric system, not on our water system. This is one way for us to, you know, I told Ms. Robertson, she talked about stormwater. Our stormwater employees are running routes every day, so this is a way for us to be able to hire more folks, to do more services. Um, it sounds like a huge increase, I understand that, but we're doing everything we can to keep as many routes in place as possible, but this is something everybody pitches in on, and regardless if you're on our water, our electric, or whatever, we run these routes to every citizen in town, so they get this service, guaranteed, and we just wanna be able to afford to do as much as we can, um, and that's all I really think.
Alright, um, a question maybe to King. Um, I know the next item is the management contract, uh, recommendation, but if we chose to increase the rate on, uh, the solid waste, and can we do the increase and accept the contract at the same time, or do they need to be a separate vote for each, or can we do it, uh, pull two and three together?
Yeah, it's, it's been put on the agenda as two separate matters.
Okay.
I, I would assume we would need to have a vote on the, on, on the, the first and then follow it with a vote on the contract.
Okay, alright, I was just asking that.
Move it along.
Move it along.
Yeah, it, it's, I think it's two separate issues.
Okay, alright.
There, one quick question, I think, I think you touched on this, but our yard debris and bulk item, that schedule would remain in place with the proposal that we have here?
That's right.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion that we accept the staff recommendations regarding the solid waste corrective action.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell, to accept the rate increase, is that correct?
The action plan for the?
Action plan.
The whole plan.
The whole plan, okay, alright.
There's several recommendations there.
So, okay, the action plan, I'm sorry, uh, the action plan. Can you please vote, please? Can you please vote, please?
Uh, motion carry three-two, uh, with Moye and, uh, Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman Moye and Councilwoman Hawkins voting no. So motions carry.
We'll, we'll start getting that out, notice information out to the citizens so they can start planning and understanding the changes that are coming, as well as how it will affect their, um...
Uh, next up is Anthony.
We're award a contract for GFL, to GFL for sanitation and recycling services. Um, as we pretty much talked about all of these items, we, we did go out for bid on February twentieth, um, we had a pre, we had a pre-bid conference, we had three attendees, we had, uh, Republic Sanitation Services, GFL, as well as Waller Sanitation Services. However, when we received the bid, then we only received two. Um, again, the changes include, uh, four-day routes, uh, bi-weekly sanitation, um, there's a lower rate for us, I mean, we're currently at eleven dollars and ninety cent, and we're going to nine dollars and ninety cent. Um, they've agreed to the six-month probationary period, um, to ensure that, you know, we're getting the level of service that we expect. And we can terminate the contract at, pretty much at any point in time, as well as, uh, the bond that they have agreed to do. And, and they've also agreed to change out any sanitation cans that may still be hold over some old waste industry stuff, to kind of clean that up, get some uniformity in the town. Um, we've asked that they make sure all containers that are for recycling are stamped or placard, um, very visibly, um, so that it's not confusing for the citizens, as well as, um, you know, um, new points of contact within the organization, so the previous, um, individuals that were managing our account will no longer be our points of contact. And so we'll, we'll have a new management team coming in, um, trying to help us right the ship, so to speak. So as we roll out, you know, our recommendation is to go with GFL. Um, again, the Republic Sanitation Services, their proposal was twenty-one dollars and fifty cent, um, and the GFL proposal with the bi-weekly, um, recycling pickup is nine dollars and ninety cent. This is a cost reduction to the town as far as the contract itself goes, um, so we're recommending, uh, contracting GFL. I'll also point out that Attorney Lassner has not reviewed the contract as of yet, before we went that far and, and gave him to, I want to make sure that where the council wanted to go. So he'll certainly, uh, we're, I'm recommending this acceptance of this contract upon his review.
Anthony?
Uh, I was looking at, disagreement will be, it's not upon, uh, it's agreed for the three years, we're for a two-year annually renewal.
Three-year contract, and then, so after the first, you can renew it annually for the next two years.
For the next two years.
And keep in mind, if you would, that GFL is going to pass along increases that usually mimic the CPI index, cost of inflation, every year. So those costs, on our end, what we pay them will continue to go up.
With that nine dollars and ninety cent, make sure this time is going to go up.
Right.
It's going to be nine dollars and ninety cent for the term of the contract.
One other question. With this increase that you, that has been passed, will this actually would break you off, I mean, would, would balance everything out? Uh, uh? What would be the difference?
Pretty close to it, but it would still be just a shy of a million dollars.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a vote.
I moved a weak set, um, staff's recommendation for the sol, solid waste management contract.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Robertson, second by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell, to accept the solid waste management contract recommendation. Uh, no discussion. If there's no discussion, will, can you please vote, please? Uh, motion carry, uh, with Councilman Johnny Moye, no, and Councilwoman, uh, Hawkins, no.
Motion carry three-two.
Can I say something? I didn't say anything during the discussion.
Yeah, yes, sir.
We never want to raise rates, but we got to look at it from the standpoint of maintaining our town's finances. And this, um, look, after presentations by staff, and looking at the amounts of money we have to pay and everything, that's why I fully support these two recommendations. I think that we've got a staff that's looking at our finances as far as what's coming in, looking at our citizens as to their concerns about things, and we want the services, and we have to pay for them. And I find that, you know, this is not as big a hit to our citizens as our electric rate we had to increase, but we have to do what's best for our town and our finances.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something in terms of what we just voted on. Um, first, I have great respect for Assistant Town Manager Bowers and Mr. McGuffin, great respect for what they do every single day, and I know if it was their choice, the rates would not go up. My concern is that the contract has not even been reviewed by the attorney, right? If I'm, if I, if, if that's what I heard clearly. So the contract has not been reviewed by the attorney for the town, and then to consult with the town, uh, but it was voted on. And then also, the citizens, um, have not been made privy to, uh, what is happening. And I know we are representatives of the citizens, but the town is of its people, and I feel like maybe there should have been a public hearing for more questions. Of course, there will al, always be, um, some, um, discomfort with a rate increase, but I, um, voted confidently in what I did, because the contract was not even reviewed by the town's attorney, and the people did not hear what it encompassed. That's my comment.
If I just would remind council that the vote was, to move forward, was contingent upon town attorney review.
Right.
This is not the first time we've done it, because sometimes the contracts aren't ready, and if any changes have come out of tonight's meeting, then we would have to go back and amend the contract. So what normally happens is, the contract will be put together, and Keen will review it. If he were to find something that was, uh, largely inaccurate or a large problem, then we would reconvene with council to discuss those contractual items.
That is respected, but that is, I was, I wasn't comfortable voting with that, so I'm confident with my vote.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four audit, uh, contract award. Uh, Ms. Manning, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Uh, after being with the audit firm, Car Rigs in Ingram, for many years, we decided to submit a request for a proposal for audit services back in February. Uh, we received two responses back, and one was from Malden and Jenkins, Certified Public Accountants, and they're out of Raleigh, North Carolina, and one from Thompson Price Scott and Adams, out of Wilmington. After carefully reviewing each proposal, and we contacted many references for each firm, um, we feel that Malden and Jenkins CPAs best fits the needs for the town. Uh, other towns and cities had a lot of positive feedback to say. Uh, they stated that they were very knowledgeable, experienced, had good communication with them, and they met their deadlines on time. Although the price for Malden and Jenkins is slightly higher, around two thousand more, for the first year, we believe their goals match the goals of the town the best. Malden and Jenkins is nationally recognized and ranked in the top one hundred by various publications as one of the largest CPA firms in the country. They audit more than six hundred and fifty state and local governments across the southeastern United States, with a large concentration in South Carolina and North Carolina. So we're asking for council to approve the three-year contract with Malden and Jenkins.
Ms. Manning, uh, where's their closest, where's the next closest town that they audit? I'm just curious, did they, did they say?
Some of the towns that they audit were New Bern, Jacksonville, Garner, Hendersonville, Rocky Mount, Selma.
Okay. Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board?
That we accept staff recommendation to award the audit contract to Malden and Jenkins.
Second?
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Robertson, to accept the audit contract for Malden and Jenkins?
Malden.
Malden and Jenkins. Um, any discussion?
Yes, I, I just got one question. Uh, what was the, uh, disadvantage, you said, uh, for not going with the those bill?
What we went off mostly were, um, just because we only received two proposals back, were the, uh, references. I called around and talked to a lot of the finance directors with the various towns and, um, cities that they perform audits on, and I just got, I felt like, you know, got more positive feedback with Malden and Jenkins than the other firm. It wasn't a whole lot of negative with the other one, but I just felt better with, with this one and the feedback that I was getting from it.
Any other questions? If not, call for the vote, please. Pick up your clicker.
Yes, so you have Adam's vote, uh, to go with, um, Malden and Jenkins, uh, for, uh, twenty twenty-three, is it twenty twenty-four? Oh, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. Okay. Don't my hands in the air, I'm sorry. Thank you, uh, yeah. Okay, now we're down to other items, uh, agenda, uh, other agenda items. Uh, uh, first up, uh, we have Ms., uh, Councilwoman Hawkins, uh, all, all alert system, uh, wonderful notification app method, uh, timeframe and completion. Councilwoman Hawkins.
I'd like to go ahead and preface by saying that all of my items, most of my items, with the exception of the intersection, uh, concerns that I was going to bring forward, um, has been brought forward initially during the vision setting meeting, and then again, and I know, um, it, it is deemed that it's being bringing, brought up again and again. Um, and, uh, the reason why it's being brought up again and again is because within any progress or process, um, the people, uh, of the, the citizens of Winterville, uh, should have transparency in terms of knowing progress or stagnation. If there's stagnation, they need to know why things are not moving. If there's progress, they need to know what the progress is. Because again, the town is of its people, I know we're in, in governance of that. However, we have the duty to keep people informed, um, and so that is why I'm bringing that, this forward again. All alert system I brought, uh, forward, and I know Town Manager Parker, uh, shared that, uh, they were in discussions with someone to provide this, or there was some sort of framework being made. And so I just would like to hear to Town, uh, Manager Parker, uh, someone to share with me, uh, where we are in that process. Um, as we know, we are in a world where there's, uh, various wars going on, we just had an eclipse today, there's floodings, there's outages, there's animals running around in and within, uh, Winterville, uh, and I believe this will be beneficial to elderly people, as well as your common, uh, uh, resident who'd like to know what is happening at that time. Um, so I would like to, uh, hear about a timeframe and/or where we are in that process.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Councilwoman Hawkins?
Yes.
Happy to give an update.
Yes.
Working with two different companies, uh, with respect to the all-call alert system, that would be Code Red, and they're not called Code Red now, and their new name escapes me, um, off the top of my head, because they were Code Red for so long. And then, uh, talking with a couple of different app companies, uh, two different endeavors, just so you know, but the anticipation is to have them both up and running by the beginning of the new fiscal year. So the goal is July. Not the first necessarily, but July. And if, should that change, I will certainly give council an update.
Okay, uh, thank you, Town Manager Parker. In terms of them being up and running, would we as a council get some sort of information in terms of, uh, what that would encompass and/or what alerts would be sent out, or just how that would look prior to July? Or within that process, will we be giving some more information about that?
Yes, certainly, everyone will get information. The all-call alert system, by and large, is going to be a voluntary sign-up, um, so there'll be a lot of information that's going to be given out to the public, and the public will have certain things that they will need to do. Um, there will not, there will be certain alerts sent out in various and sundry, uh, situations, and we'll certainly cover those. Uh, but we will also reserve the right to, uh, there's a term for it, that I've lost it, but you can certainly, uh, focus on certain geographical areas of town and send out certain notifications related to certain things going on, uh, at any given time, so there will be some flexibility, and there'll be some additional, uh, notifications that are made that may not be on the standard list. But yes, ma'am, you will certainly get information so you can help pass that along to citizens, and they'll know what to do.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Next up is town-based transportation update on potential resources. Uh, Councilwoman Hawkins?
Yes, so I brought this, uh, item back up. I initially brought it up during the vision setting meeting, and then again, and now again tonight. Um, with us having conversation in terms of, um, the school safety, um, crosswalks, um, and other, uh, safety, uh, items that will be put in the town, um, I wanted to know if, and I, I brought it up, I believe in February, um, Town Manager Parker was not present, Assistant Town Manager Bowers, um, was present, and if I recall, um, there was something mentioned in terms of, um, discussions being had with the Great Bus Service in terms of a route that is no longer taking place, um, and that just discussions in terms of perhaps maybe a bus can, uh, possibly be, uh, routed here in Winterville. We know that the Great Bus goes to Pitt Community College. Why is this important? Why am I bringing this up? Again, we have people walking up and down, it is a safety concern for me. Um, I know we talked about walkability and health, and I am, I am a walker, I am an avid walker, uh, but when I think about extreme weather in, uh, twenty twenty-four, and our ecosystem, um, walking does not always help when you have, uh, do, uh, several weeks of, um, climate or temperatures, uh, ninety above, and/or rain, or, and/or, uh, cold weather. So that is why I'm bringing this up again, to perhaps get some sort of, um, more information in terms of where we are, uh, because this issue, um, I will continue to bring it up.
Well, let me ask this question, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we just, uh, had a interesting conversation on raising the rates on trash, but you're sitting here now, you're talking about town-based transportation. And if we go with the Great Bus, just using Great Bus, there's going to be a cost to provide transportation in the town, so therefore, someone is going to have to pay for it. So therefore, there's going to be another cost. You don't want to pass the cost on the trash, but you want to pass transportation on. So I'm, I'm kind of confused. You say you don't want to raise costs on one thing, but you want to add something that's going to cost the town. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Can I respond?
You can respond.
Okay. So first, I have a right to, uh, raise any concern.
It's, it's not about your right not to raise concern.
I'm not going, I'm not having an argument.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you either, but...
You can speak, and then when you finish speaking, I will speak. That is why we need points of order. I have a right to speak on what I am. We are not up here under your allegiance and to appease you. We are here to speak for the needs of the people. So I asked, could I speak? So if I could speak, I'll speak, if you're speaking. But I, I like to conduct business for the people in a proper manner. And I'm not here to have an argument with the mayor. We are not up here to appease what you want. We are up here to do the people's work. And if I, and if I did not want to vote for an increase because I did not feel clear via on the contract before the people, that is my right. That is my right, and no one will take my right away, including you. So in terms of why I didn't vote, I didn't want to vote for that, and why I'm talking about town-based transportation is because I live on Mill Street, right? And I see people walking up and down, rain, sleet, or snow. You live on the west side, the best side, right? So you might not see that. I see people with strollers. So if we want, if we want expenses, then perhaps people can recoup the expenses in another way. But if people need to pay a fare to get to and from where they need to go, then that is something that, that is their choice. And that can be brought up during a public comment, hearing as well, for the public comment. We don't get to say what we're going to do on behalf of the people because it doesn't appease us. So I'm speaking on behalf of what I have heard from the people and me in general. If I did not have a vehicle in a, in a, in a town that is close to twelve thousand and growing, we need something different, and nobody is going to close my mouth.
Have you got a question?
That was my, that was my comment, and I am not going to come here every month and have an argument with you, because whatever I bring up, you oppose. And I'm not clear, or I'm not understanding why.
Do you have a solution for the transportation?
The solution is asking to follow up what was told to me on the February meeting in terms of the Great Bus. Now, if I'm making this up, it could, it's in the minutes, or if I was dreaming. I was told that the route, there's a route in, for the Great Bus that was no longer being utilized, and that there was a discussion for that. I did not come up with that. Also, I have contacted the Pats Vehicle Services. Now again, I want to say, no one can tell anybody, well, you got to be knowledgeable. You have to be an expert, or you have to be this or that. Citizens have a right to run for this seat and speak to the needs. I contacted the Pats Services, and I was told that you have to, number one, make an appointment, and number two, you have to pay nine dollars for each way. If someone needs to get to Dollar General or Food Line, they might not have eighteen dollars, right? And they, and they still need to do it. They want to go to Dollar General to get toothpaste, they might not want to make an appointment. So this is why I am asking. It is valid, and I am speaking for the people as well as myself, and, and that is that. I am not here to appease anyone.
Okay. Next, water drainage system site visit by council, and Councilwoman Hawkins. Can you explain that?
Going back to number two, I asked Town Manager Parker to share information that was brought before the council by Assistant Town Manager Bowers in terms of the Great Bus. Can Town Manager Parker, can you respond to that?
I can. It was not the Great Bus.
Okay.
It was potentially conversations to be had with the Pats system. Also, I stated, and I was not here, I was sick. We previously, a few years ago, had conversations with the City of Greenville and the Great Bus system about a potential adding a route. And at that time, the cost was astronomical. And the plan is to reach back out to them to see if anything's changed. And also, they're not the only two forms of transportation. If council directs staff to look at other forms of transportation just within Winterville proper, then we will certainly look into those. We did not, and we have not had the opportunity to delve in it during the vision setting process, as I would have hoped we would have been able to. But certainly, staff stands ready to have that discussion further. But until then, staff will look at some of the options that are readily available to see what the cost would be for Winterville.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Again, I am speaking on what I was told in February. Thanks for that clarification. And I move that the council picks a date and time, or the next meeting, to discuss the other parameters, or the other, any other companies, any other contracts, anything that can be done, including the Pats service, that we can extend to them that this is still a need. So that is a motion that I am making.
A turn. Yes, sir.
She's, she's, she would like to make a motion on this.
She's made a motion, yes, sir.
I made a motion.
Okay.
That you're going to follow, that she got, that the town manager is going to follow up, that the town manager is going to follow up on the information that she was giving you.
The town manager is going to follow up on the information that, that was presented here tonight? That's your motion?
So when I go back and revisit what Town Manager Parker just said, that she said that the town council has not had the opportunity to delve into this conversation a bit further, and that, yes, or that she did not have the opportunity to reach back to Pats, them being, I don't know if it's herself and/or her staff.
It is currently myself, and to be quite clear, there are several items that you all, I believe, have a copy of the handout from the vision setting meeting that council has not discussed, nor had the council prioritize. I am happy for staff and myself to work on those items upon such time as, as we have some direction. But again, in the interim, I'm happy to, to look towards information. But I do not have a collective direction on town transportation at this point.
Okay.
Just in the, in the, to be clear.
And I thank you, and I respect you for making that clear. So what I hear you say, Town Manager Parker, is that the, you need direction from the council in terms of a timeframe to contact one or more entities that could potentially provide some sort of service or present what they may be able to do? And/or you would like maybe the town council to discuss this further? I, I'm not quite sure. Maybe a timeframe, and maybe the other entities. Me, myself, I'm just town council. I know the Pats service. I don't know how to go into negotiations with them, but I, I don't mind. I don't mind doing the work. What, whatever needs to be done. But I am sitting up here, and it's okay to sit up here, one person, speaking for whomever needs it. I do not have the clear, I do not have the clarity in terms of what we're supposed to decide, but I know that I would like to move forward with working towards some level of town-based transportation, be it a minivan, be it a van, be it contractors, a, a individual person, something. And, and I don't have, you know, I, I'm not, I'm really feeling up here, like I'm really feeling like I have to be cookie cutter and perfect, and I'm not doing that tonight. So I respect you so much, Town Manager Parker. I do not know how to relay that to you. All I can say is that I move that we move forward with more investigation in terms of town-based transportation providers to ensure our citizens get from point A to point B within the town safely.
Councilwoman Hawkins, if that's your motion.
That is my motion.
I can work with that. However, again, just so I'm clear, I don't need a motion to tell me who to reach out to. I need a motion that council considers this a priority, that the council wants to move forward with, and that is no.
No, that's fine.
Take nothing away from, from the fact that it's important. But in light of all of the projects we have going currently, I do not have a collective directive, and that's what I need. So your motion to get that started.
So I make a motion that Town Manager Parker moves forward with looking into what is needed to help start the process in investigating potential contractors, people, or whomever for town-based transportation. I don't know if I'm saying that right. I'll say it again and again until we can get it right.
May I say something? Um, I think we need a second.
We ain't got a second yet.
Oh, okay, sorry, I have to say that.
No, we ain't got a second.
All right, I, I second.
Got a motion and a second. Got a motion made by Councilwoman Hawkins, second by Councilman Moore to have Town Manager Parker explore, correct? Correct me.
Are you addressing me?
Yeah.
Okay, so when you say correct, yes, to explore, to investigate, to explore, to look further into town-based transportation and any entity that can help to push this forward.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. So you have a motion and a second, and now discussion?
I was just going to say, could we just ask, I mean, did it need to, do we have to have a motion? Can we just ask Town Parker manager?
And I think Terry said it really well a moment ago. What, what she's looking for is, is to, for council to maybe prioritize or say this is, this is a particular item that's high enough on the list to, to give her and staff direction to move forward on it. And I, I think that's what the.
That was just my question.
Motion does.
Okay.
And normally, there are things, if I may, that, that don't need a motion, but because we didn't really get a chance to discuss several of these in our vision setting meeting, it is helpful.
Now, my discussion is, we do, I'm, you know, of course, you know, this may be important, but I still think that we have other items that we haven't even touched the surface on that needs to be prioritized first. I'm not saying that this is not one of them, but this could be pushed further down because we haven't even scratched the surface of what we got to look forward to, as the word called budget. And I think there's some items in there that we're going to have to address that going to need to be prioritized, and there's going to be some expenses that we're going to have to really, really look at, that is going to be very, very strategic, how we look at these things, and how we prioritize, prioritize these things coming up in the next couple of weeks. So take that in consideration, you know, yes, ma'am.
So I have another question. So are we saying that with Councilwoman Hawkins' motion, we are actually voting for this to be a priority in the budget? Or are we just making, or are we just voting on, pretty much asking Town Manager Parker and the staff to explore transportation? Because to me, I think that I need to have that clarified.
Uh, may I, I'll jump in. I, I think it's the latter of the two. It's, it's not that you're saying that this is something that you're ready to spend money on, for lack of a better way, but, but just getting the, the staff to look into it and report back to maybe options, and then you can put that into your budget.
And I'm just putting it out there.
Okay.
I'm not saying, you know, but I'm just putting it out there, keep in mind, we got some stuff that we need to prioritize. So for all of us, that we need to be thinking about how we're going to prioritize these things coming up that we haven't even addressed. Stormwater, all this good stuff that's coming down the pipe. So we have a motion and a second. Now you may vote.
One moment, please. Oh, there we go.
I'm, I'm sorry. Now you may vote.
There you go.
Okay, all right. The motion fails. Councilman Moore, yes. Councilwoman Hawkins, yes. Councilman Smith, no. Councilwoman Robinson, no. And Mayor Pro Tim, Brandy Harrell, no. So that motion failed. Next up is water drainage system site visit by council. Councilwoman Hawkins.
Yes, so there has been a history in Winterville of flooding via the drainage systems, based on infrastructure of the drainage systems, based on runoff water, based on a variety of reasons why there are flooding. I know that there is a drainage system, an intricate system, or a system that is not, that is older, right? So I believe that in order for us to share information to the citizens in terms of why this cannot be repaired quickly, budgeting or not, we need to be educated on what we are speaking of. And the only way that I feel like we can be more educated is to actually go to a site. And so this is what I am proposing, that we make some sort of arrangements to go out to a drainage site and see exactly what is causing the various flooding, because it continues. That is, that is my item.
Town manager, has anyone shared with Councilwoman Hawkins the big project, project that we have been planning as far as drainage? Because I think that if you could get, you know, see that project, you would understand what we're doing to alleviate the drainage here in Winterville, especially, you know, round up in here and, and the Nobel Canal thing and everything. I really think that that would help in understanding what we're planning to do for drainage.
I think that I'd be happy to, to have staff work with you to get you a tour, and anybody else who wants to go for that matter, to look at the area in question. Because you have Noble Canal, but then you have the Noble Canal Drainage Basin, which is a larger issue than just the canal itself. We do have a report. We have a multimillion-dollar project that we're in the process of trying, and it's in the W H Robinson area as part of it. It's just a, a large area, and I think it's a great idea to give you a bird's eye view as some of the challenge. Again, that's not, doesn't take.
And any of the other board members?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Be glad to do that. In order to kind of show you what we're working on, is what we deem is, is some of the largest and the worst of our problem. However, it doesn't address other areas where there may be issues, nor does it address, and this is critically important, there's a lot of private drainage systems.
there's a lot of private drainage systems on people's property. We do not maintain it, and therefore, we currently don't repair it either. So you may have some people reach out to you, some of the other council members may, that reference drainage on their specific property, and it may be due to failing infrastructure on their property. That's not part of what we're talking about currently. But be glad to put that together.
Thank you, and I will be just, I'll, I will be in touch with you in terms of perhaps a timeframe, when that can be on. I'd like to say, on my property, on the side of my property, there is a ditch, and it is, it floods when it rains. And it's, it is not on my property. And I was told, and my neighbors were told, that that is, it wasn't ours. So I do not have the, you know, how to articulate the exact cause of it, but it's something, I don't think it's something state. I don't know what it is, but it is not on my property. So when, in discussion with you in terms of that, I'd love for somebody to come out and look at mine, as well as some of my neighbors, and, and see exactly what we are talking about. So thank you for that.
Be glad to, because there are a lot of drainage ways in town. Lifts coming up.
Okay.
That belong to the town, but then there's some that do not belong to the town. We'd be glad to delineate that.
Ms. Hawkins, just to clarify, so what we run into in town, when we do a stormwater calculation, we build a subdivision, or whatever the case may be, it's just for the impervious surface. Well, what tends to happen is, you build 200 houses, you have this size driveway, okay? Well, then everybody adds on to their driveway. So that rainwater now makes it through the street that much faster. Also, what we find a lot of is, and I went through this last week with, with a couple that just moved here, they didn't do it, but the people before them piped their gutters to the ditch. So when you get a whole neighborhood of houses that have the gutters piped to the ditch, that ditch has been calculated to handle the stormwater runoff from the streets and the driveways, not 150 house, you know, rooftops. So that's a big issue we have, are illicit discharges.
And you're not supposed to do that.
Correct, those are illicit discharges. We had an old subdivision show up here, you know, last year about flooding issues in their neighborhood. Well, there's a whole lot of houses that are piped directly to the ditch. So when you go out there and start showing them that, the complaints kind of go down a little bit, because, okay, now you gotta tear all your drains out of your yard and get them out of that ditch, but that turns into cost. So just want you to understand that the private ditches, we can't maintain, but a lot of those have, you know, the same issues. I went over this with Mr. Jones at the church. They have a ton of drains around them, several of those are private. And then the grading issues they have, that just adds, you know, every bit of water that comes and gets to the ditch that much faster. Every street we put in, every yard of concrete we put in, every sidewalk we put in, that water's just getting either to Fork Swamp or Swift Creek that much faster. So it can only go through those two small places. And when you're trying to dump gringles of water, our water, you know, it just stacks up. So it's, a lot of our issues are, you know, things are calculated for one amount, and what they're really receiving is a totally different amount because of illicit discharges and people adding on, you know, impervious surfaces and so on and so forth. I'd be glad to take you and come by your house and look at yours.
Thank you.
Take you out, I mean, walk ditches with me, look at all the gutters that are piped to the ditches, and you'll see that that whole roof now is dumping right in this ditch that wasn't calculated for that runoff. So I'd be glad to take you.
Thank you very much. And I, and I feel like a lot of the complaints are not just because people want to complain, right? They have mosquitoes, they have animals, and you, so the complaints are valid, but educating the people is something that is needed. And, and I feel like me learning or gaining more can help me to better converse, you know, to better talk about it with the people. And so communication counts and not, you know, assumptions that people are just complaining. No, not, not saying you, but people are complaining, and then when it's caused it. People are asking because of mosquitoes, it's hot weather, it's, you know, they're valid. So I thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
If I may, quick addition, you mentioned mosquitoes. Am I correct, does the town not still spray? Do we not have that service? And we are, if not one of few, maybe-
That's correct.
The only municipality that treats for mosquitoes in our town. So another item that the public needs to be aware of, a service that we provide.
That's true, and we have a rigorous program comparatively speaking, yes.
I will add too, one thing the town's getting ready to see in the near future, you've heard me talk about MS4 stormwater regulations. So some of the changes involve, infrastructure in certain parts of town has been there for a long time, it's really old. So what happens over time, they start to deteriorate, they start to get sediment in it. Our new MS4 regulations that we'll be implementing will have to clean out a certain percentage of those every year. And so we haven't necessarily been doing those types of practices in the past, but because of the growth of the town, the size of the town, the fact that we're over 10,000 population now, we're gonna have to implement changes. And so clearly, you know, a lot more work and a lot more action is gonna have to be taken out on the street. Have to see how that gets funded, but, you know, that's, conversation's gonna be coming about how, how we implement that program and how it affects the citizens, and, you know, finding those, maybe it's just flogged with sediment, and it's something as simple as cleaning it out, jetting, jetting it out. It's not always necessarily a complete replacement, things of that nature. So we're gonna, hopefully, we'll have a more robust program in the future that allows us to identify these areas. We also have the stormwater AIA going on right now. And so that's something that, you know, I've, I've pushed since I've been in this role to try to get a better assessment of where our stormwater features are and how they look and the condition of those features. And so that's gonna also allow us to determine where to prioritize funding so that we can hit the worst spots first.
Thank you very much, and it's good to know that those regulations will be put in place so that you can assess it and see what's minor, to see what's major, right? And, and then I know that takes your time and staff and work and money, but in a growing town, it is necessary, and I thank you for all you do. In terms of mosquito spraying for mosquitoes, is there a timeframe? Is there a window when you all do this? Because I've never seen it. And so just to be educated on that, when does that take place? And if there is spraying for that, when are the people alerted of this, right? If you have children out playing, what, what, you know, so we're doing it, how does that work?
The gentleman that was doing our spraying is no longer with the town. However, we, we still have the audio equipment, everything, and what, what we can do is get a schedule together. A lot of times, it's based on the weather pattern. So if it's really, really dry, you don't want to spray anymore than you have to, because it kills other things besides mosquitoes. So you don't want to kill bees and things of that nature, natural pollinators. So you try to limit the amount of spraying that you do. We can try to look at what that's gonna, you know, look like in the future and get, try to get a tentative schedule out. And literally, it would be based on, I would think, precipitation and how wet it's been.
I understand, and this is also based on mosquito population, so, but, yes, thank you, mosquito count. So trying to get, as the weather gets warmer, staff goes out and determines that it's time to spray. But if you've ever heard a, a truck with a whining sound and white dust coming out of the back, that's a mosquito truck.
It's typically in the evenings after dawn, later in the evening?
So just a notification of that would be good. Like, I, I've never seen it, right? So that is why I'm asking, and I'm inquiring, and I'm talking about it. And if, you know, if it hadn't been done in the last year or so, I mean, I have never seen it, and when it is going to happen, I'd like to be notified so I can at least see how that works and/or alert people, but thank you for that, because that is good prevention. Thank you.
Yeah, it's gonna be, your, your prime season's gonna be summer season, because that's when mosquito activity is greatest. So three-fourths of the year, you're probably not gonna see a whole lot of that activity. During the summer, definitely.
I would like to add that I do receive that service, and it's a great service in our neighborhood, on, on our side of the town. The town does an excellent job on that.
So one thing I'm hearing, we may need to evaluate how our routes are, and see how that, how that plays out.
And it might be a good chance to do a ride-along, if you want to, Ms. Hawkins, be a good chance to do a ride-along with them on that mosquito thing too, so you can see how the service work and all of that.
I, I do believe that what we do enables our, our citizens to go out, be able to go outside comfortably during the warm weather.
Ma'am.
Yes, sir. Line tape.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess. Falls for the calls. I drank a water.
A fine pin you got there.
I do a lot, John.
I don't have pins this fancy in my office.
Hey, when did y'all add the white pass for that door? Is that something you done in the last month? About broke my wrist. I started to go through that earlier today, and it wouldn't let me through, so. Call the meeting back to order. I think we're now at number four. Intersection concern update, feedback from MPO Councilwoman Hawkins.
So Town Manager Parker just shared that there has been, I guess, an approval on a stop sign being placed at the intersection. If I'm not correct, Old Tar Road and Vernon White, am I correct on that?
Yes, ma'am, you all approved the resolution tonight that would, where NCDOT would install a three-way stop. As you recall, there's no fourth leg of that intersection, so a three-way stop at Vernon White where it intersects into Old Tar as a stopgap measure, if you will, until the Old Tar widening project begins, and then Vernon White will be realigned to be more directionally straight on with Tavern, and a stoplight will be, a signalized intersection will be put at that location, a stoplight.
Thank you. Is there a timeframe of that, or how, did they say when they would do it, or?
The stops, put in the stop signs themselves? I might ask Mr. Bowers to enlighten us.
No, ma'am, they basically told us that once we passed the resolution and got it back to them, then they would get it on the schedule. I'll be glad to communicate. I had meetings with them last week, and so got a lot of things going when it, when it comes to NCDOT, but certainly, once we, once the council takes action, or they did take action tonight, we'll, we'll give that information over to them. I'll get feedback from them about scheduling, and I'll be glad to report that back to the council.
Thank you.
You through with item four, Ms., I mean, Councilwoman Hawkins?
Yep, thank you.
All right. Item five, multipurpose center collected site visit by council slash staff, Councilwoman Hawkins.
So we talked about the multipurpose center during the vision setting. So, we talked about the multi-purpose center, um, during the vision setting meeting, if I can recall, and/or, uh, after that. I learned that we have been talking about a multi-purpose center for eighteen years now. There was a soil testing which approved, um, building, uh, a, a structure onto, uh, I believe the location is at Church Street, if, am I not correct?
Chapman.
Chapman.
Chapman Street, okay. Um, so, with that being said, again, in process, is there, so, we got the soil tested. Uh, I would like to know what are the next steps and when, uh, we can schedule, uh, council or, or myself, uh, to go out with, um, maybe, Mr. Johnson, Johnston, Evan Johnston, or whomever, that can just shed some light on the process, um, and, and, and that will shed light on a timeframe. So, once they shed light on the process of getting a structure built, does that take a year, five years? That would help, so that is my item. Can someone speak to that?
Councilwoman Hawkins, that's gonna be, uh, Diane White, our Parks and Rec Director.
Okay. Good evening, um, so, right now, the next phase after the soil sample is to get a request, request for proposals sent out. So, right now, we are working on that, um, you know, one thing, we have one chance to make sure we, we get it right and get it sent out.
So Diane, those requests for proposals will be for what?
That'll be site-specific and comprehensive, but mainly the site-specific plan for their property on Chapman.
But these are, uh, these are plans for Parks and Rec and for the site itself, not for any facility or building, et cetera?
Correct. So, basically, the next step would be, once we get the RFP together and ready to be sent out, um, our goal is to have it ready to be posted, um, for any of the firms that may want to send a proposal in by the end of this month. So, that would be the next phase that we are looking at.
You mean the end of May?
Oh, end of, end of, um, April to get it ready.
Oh, to get it ready, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you meant for them to respond, I was like, oh.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
That was me.
You said to send out a proposal?
A request for proposal for any firm that will want to put together the comprehensive and the site-specific master plan. That is, that's one thing, we can't put it together and say, hey, well, we're gonna throw this here, throw this here, that's where they come in.
So, it'll be prepared by the end of this month to be sent out, to then get others to, I guess, accept the proposal or look at the proposal, to then say, hey, this might be something we can do, and then they'll get back to the town and then it'll be presented to us. My, and then, so, we'll wait to get something back now.
But, um, I'm, I wanna respond to yours, uh, Councilwoman Hawkins, and also to whole council. I think what she's saying, I know what she's saying, but we could be in our minds thinking of, correct, uh, hope, correct me, right, but we need to decide whether we want, uh, one, one company to do it all, what, right, is it, correct?
Yeah, but we're not there yet.
Okay.
I mean, thinking about it's great.
Right, but I'm saying as a council, we need to know what we want on, on a site. That's what I'm trying to get them to start thinking, what, what we like to see, correct?
Right, but the site-specific master plan is gonna help assist with public input and getting there.
So, once, so, just for example, say if we send out the proposal, say if we get five, then from there, we have to review and then later on, decide on who we pick. From there, the next phase would later on, that company would come and do the assessment, send out the surveys, like, they would be the one reaching out to the community.
And let me back up, just, let's start from ground zero. We're not sending out a proposal, we're sending out a request for proposal. It's like advertising for bids.
Right.
I, I don't know that everybody's on that page, so I just wanna make sure everybody's on that page. So, usually you have thirty days where companies can submit their proposals based on the scope of work we put out. Then those company, that company, we would bring it to council, we would recommend that we hire XYZ company, we have two plans. We have the comprehensive master plan, if that's what we call it, comprehensive plan, and then, that's for the whole department and the departmental needs, and then we have the site-specific master plan on the site that we have picked for the multi-purpose facility. So, they'll kinda be going along in tandem, I assume. That will be council input, that will be staff input, and that will be public input, and there'll be meetings and charrettes, maybe, and a multitude of things. And then, the reports will come back to council, and then you all will see what the sum culmination, and Diane, I didn't mean to take her, but bear with me one second, sum culmination of what, uh, the public, the council, staff, everybody's input. And then, we'll move forward with trying to determine what funding mechanisms we apply for in order to actually construct a facility. So, we're talking about a bit of time before we actually know what the plan looks like, what the building looks like, what the facilities look like. And then, we'll pursue the second half of what I call the funding phase, where we try to find the money, apply for grants, that kind of thing, and then move forward with that. In the meantime, as we're doing all of that on the facility side, we've gotta figure out how we're going to staff and fund to operate, managing the facility. So, I just kinda wanted to throw it out in that kind of, uh, timeframe, I think we could be looking at how long for the plans to be put together.
Um, so, timeframe, you know, can be anywhere from up to ten months, um, once we decide on a company. But then, um, one thing with the plans, we do need those for grants for any type of funding, um, such as a part F, that, um, that's probably one of the more important pieces to the funding, um, so that's what they look at for their points. That's one thing we have to have and update.
When do part F, when do they start looking at part F? What usually, what, they start looking at part F?
So, every year, the deadline is usually in May.
In May?
And for everybody, the acronym PARTF is Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, monies, so.
So, we could, I'm sorry, so, basically, ten months, but then, within that ten months, if we want to start looking at funds, we need to have that part F ready by May.
If that's one of the, the funding that we wanna look at, yes.
Maybe I was putting the cart before the horse.
Well, that's why I think it's important, 'cause from a timeframe perspective, I just wanna kinda make.
But, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, also too, I was just trying to make sure that, you know, if y'all need some direction, and if y'all looking for a direction from the board, I wanna make sure the board is giving y'all directions that you need to get it done, if that makes sense.
I think if we have a set of directions, it's on this project. Because, as we did discuss during the vision setting meeting and spent the sum culmination of our time on this project, uh, you all were made aware that we need to move forward with securing these two plans, which the money is in the budget, this year's budget, to do that, uh, this current year that's getting ready to end. And then, those plans move forward, and that really starts to develop what the end result looks like in terms of in concept.
And with the plan, I mean, I know, for the woman Hawkins, you said about, you know, reaching out, you know, talking to the community, and that's one part with the, the organization, the firm. That's what they do, um, so that way, we get plenty of input from the community, um, which also helps with the scoring system.
Thank you, so, what I hear is that part F is funding, which the town does have the funding? Am I, to apply for something by May?
The, the part of grant is a, is a cyclical pot of money. And I think the maximum amount of grant we could receive is five, is five hundred thousand dollar matching. Sometimes match can be your way in that we purchase, sometimes it's cash match. But, trying to be strategic, and when we apply for those monies is, is critical, obviously. Uh, we received a five hundred thousand dollar part of grant for the park expansion at Winterville Recreation Park in the past. So, I think it's making sure we've got these plans, they're board-approved, so that we can add to our ability to try to get the most money we can. Clearly, that's not gonna fund the whole project, so then we're looking at borrowing money, um, because the likelihood we would get grant funds is, you know, so we would be looking at figuring out how we would finance the building, and then on a, on a, like, track, try to figure out how we're gonna hire the staff to maintain it, to, you know, have the, yes.
I would say, um, Town Manager, and thank you, Ms. White, for sharing that bit of information. It helps me, and I think that, you know, that's why I'm bringing this up. Um, I would say, like, a ten-month timeframe, just to get some feedback and then getting, you know, having that information from those prospective companies or contractors, as well as surveys within the community. I think that that is, uh, a remarkable time, uh, beings that it's been eighteen years in the process. Uh, Town Manager Parker was not here at that time, but I would say, moving forward, um, this is moving in the right direction. And so, thank you, and I guess, along the way, hopefully, we'll get some updates in terms of the process, so then that the people of Winterville, uh, will know where we are, um, in the progress. Thank you so much.
No, I was gonna ask you, so we need to give y'all the, make the motion, give y'all, go ahead.
No, we've already got to go ahead.
Okay, all right, okay.
We had to go ahead when y'all approved the budget.
Okay, cool.
Last year.
All right.
Um, uh, Councilwoman Hawkins, if I could say, it's probably more realistic to set a year's time, because once the RFPs get out, or request for proposals get out by the end of this month, then we've got thirty days advertisement to expect those back, then we'll have to get to you in your June meeting, and then ten months after that. So, I think it's likely twelve to fourteen months to be back with plans in hand, asking you to approve those, is that realistic? Okay. Just to have our plans approved, to see where we're going, but you'll start to hear a lot about it once a firm is chosen, because they'll be advertising, you all will get reports, and, uh, it, it'll ramp up somewhat, once that's done.
Um, thank you, and should, should I assume, like, you will provide us reports, or should I bring this up periodically, or e- every couple of months? Or what, how, how would we get this, uh, uh, consistent feedback along the pro- process?
Um, so, I mean, as, as we go in, in the phases, I can update y'all, so that way, you know, you're still losing.
You also receive a monthly report from departments, and I think that is, you get that every month, by email, from all the departments, or most of the departments, I should say. And I think that's a great place for you to include updates on that project. I'm talking about the email reports that go out from departments, and quarterly reports, but that's a more timely, the monthly updates, when things occur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is, um, items for future agenda, I mean, future agenda and future work sessions. Everybody don't get excited at one time, but next up is, okay.
Due to the fact that we've got a fairly lengthy closed session ahead of us, um, unless there's a department that absolutely has a time-sensitive issue, I would ask council to table the quarterly reports till next month.
Ain't happy about that, are they? They want you to do this.
They're probably gonna be mad, no, they're gonna be mad with me tomorrow.
They just, they just want you to do away with it. You, you got a second? All right, amen corner over there, amen, right? All right, okay.
That's assuming councils.
What is, what is y'all's pleasure?
I'm fine.
I agree.
All right, so, okay, all right. Um, next is, uh, announcement, um, Don, I reckon hit the highlights, uh.
Newsletter information is due, uh, tomorrow, because I have to get it out. And, uh, one thing I would draw your attention to, I still have a ticket or so for the, um, town and, uh, state dinner, if anybody's plans have changed and now they can go, that's Wednesday evening. Uh, Coffee with the Cop is Friday, April nineteenth. Also, if you have not let me know about, uh, City Vision, and I also need to know your travel plans for City Vision, I've already got some of those this evening, but I need that so I can prepare your, uh, your travel checks and things like that. There is an elected officials' breakfast at Shepherd Memorial, if you would contact them, or let me know, and I'll contact him if you're interested in going. We do have some upcoming budget meetings, I know Terry would be remiss if I ran across those. We have budget meetings on May sixth, and then, again, we have the work sessions on May twenty-first and May twenty-third. Uh, I think that's it, if anybody has any questions on any, or if a question arises at a later time, just shoot me an email or give me a call. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, call council's attention to the May sixth budget workshop, historically, for those of you that have been with us a bit, that has been a short, relatively short meeting, where we just talk about revenues. Well, we gotta have a lot to talk about, so we anticipate that that'll be more of a full-blown workshop, uh, with dinner included, um, as, not to have to add any additional meetings, I'm not sure about that yet, but we really need to make that a full-blown workshop on the night of the sixth, so, just calling everyone's attention to that.
Do you need to change to the five-thirty? If you're talking about a full-blown meeting.
Well, I mean, I think, when I meet, you know, I think we have historically spent, I don't know, forty-five minutes or so in that meeting, and I could see it extending well beyond that, not three or four hours, but certainly, uh, we need to, we have a lot to discuss, so.
'Cause, the only reason I say that, because if you do dinner, you're talking, you're getting here at six, we're gonna, we're gonna pause, and that's gonna eat up another thirty minutes.
Now, there's nothing to say that certainly we can't work through dinner, um, in the essence of time, I'm happy to do that, uh, and I can work with my cohorts over there that have a part, I'm sure they'll be happy to do that, just to not delay things.
Okay, all right. That'd be fine, if, if y'all willing to work through your dinner, that's fine, council, council on that end.
Yes.
Y'all willing to work through your dinner?
Work through my dinner, we're gonna start at six, right?
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. Okay, I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, starting on, um, Councilwoman Hawkins, I mean, I'm sorry, Town Attorney, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mayor, I have no report tonight, uh, I do have a couple matters for closed session, therefore do point out that we do have a closed session tonight, pursuant to the statute identified in your agenda specifically relating to attorney-client privilege matters.
Thank you, Sarah. Now, uh, Councilwoman Hawkins, on your end.
Yep, so, as part of closing remarks, um, I am going to say that we need to keep the main thing the main thing. And the main thing that I come up here and speak about is the business of the people. Um, I believe that every item that is brought forth on the agenda is valid, um, it should not be alienated, but if it is, I'm okay with that. I'm good and I am, uh, equipped, uh, to face that. Um, I don't want it to be misconstrued as troublesome, uh, this is my voice, and I'm going to continue to use it to solve situations, not saying problems, because these are everyday situations that need to be addressed. Um, I am here for the business of the people, for the people, of the people, and by the people, and I'm proud to do so.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Only thing I would like to, just re, uh, make sure that if y'all would.
Only thing I would like to just re, uh, make sure that if y'all would please place that date on, um, April the twenty-ninth, for the breakfast at the, for Shepherd Memorial Library. There's some good information gonna be given out that morning, and it's gonna be a great breakfast, it was excellent last year, it's gonna be just as good this year. Please come out on the twenty-ninth.
Oh, for real?
Um, just wanna say, as always, thank you to staff, um, thank you for all that you do, um, thank you to, uh, my fellow council members, and to the mayor, and everyone on, on the, the council. Also, wanted to just lift up, this is, um, Autism Awareness Month, and we do have Aces for Autism in our community, and so, um, you know, seeing the building, and seeing all, you know, the folks that are benefiting from that services, from that service, um, all the families, the individuals, um, just wanna make sure that we, um, keep that in mind this month, for Autism Awareness Month, thank you.
Ms. Robinson.
I'd like to thank all of you that supported our, um, we host City Union, which is a twenty-nine church thing in eastern North Carolina. I do appreciate the support from the town of Winnebago, and items that we put in the back, I was really proud to have some from Winnebago in the little souvenir bags we gave, and I appreciate our mayor coming by Sunday morning, and in his Easter outfit. Yeah, I had to get that in. Um, Mid East Annual Banquet, it's six-thirty, the eighteenth, and it's gonna be in Williamson at, um, I think it's the Country Club, but anyways, next week, next Thursday, the Annual Banquet, that's it.
Uh, Councilwoman Smith.
Um, thank you to staff for being willing to put your reports off to next meeting. Um, I did wanna say, congratulations to Chief Moore and his crew on their Class C rating, and I don't remember all the letters for the acronym, but it, that's very admirable, and an asset to our town. Um, a thank you to Ms. Diane White and her staff, we had a great opening day for baseball out at the ballpark, so it was a wonderful event. And then to our utilities departments, um, this is gonna include Mr. Cliff, Cliff McGuffin, and, and Ron Mills, because about in the last month, it was great, half of Greenwood was out of utilities, people were like, y'all out? I said, nope. People got us. Uh, what was the thing between Duke Electric and, yeah, we left them years ago, so thank you to everybody who was around for that foresight, um, but thank you for everything you do every day.
Y'all have heard enough from me this evening.
Well, um, again, kudos to everybody, uh, even, um, the council up here, I appreciate everything that y'all do, um, and to the staff, always, um, you know, y'all work hard, great job, but we're gonna be heading to the City Visions, uh, conference, uh, end of the month, it's a good conference, it's a good way to learn a lot of things about, um, city government, uh, whether it be a large municipality, a village, uh, whatever, so, uh, in case, uh, some of the new ones are going, uh, that's a good opportunity to network with other, uh, council members, and, um, learn some of their struggles, learn some of their, um, positives, um, and, um, I remember my first one, uh, it was really good, got to learn, uh, sit in on some sessions, uh, and learn a lot of different things, but also, um, I was just, I know we don't do shout-outs, but I'm gonna throw a shout-out to, uh, my North Pitt Lady Panthers, uh, state, state champions, and Ms. Smith over there, Councilwoman Smith, you know, great job, and, uh, bringing them ladies through.
Do much, but support them, they did all the work, I can promise you that. We are very proud of them.
Congratulations.
But, yeah, so, congratulations to them. Uh, with that being said, uh, I need a motion, uh, for closed session.
I move that we go into closed session.
Uh, clicker.
Uh, do we need a vote?
Yes, you do.
I'm sorry, uh, clicker, I'm sorry, clicker, clicker.
Who was the second?
Uh.
Mr. Moore.
Mr., uh.
Boy.
I'm sorry.
Boy.
Councilwoman Smith and, and Councilman Moore, and it passed, so we're going to closed session?
I can't.
Do any of your staff?
Um, Anthony will be joining us for.
And the rest of them's gonna be?
Yes, except Officer Harold.
Okay. Um, there, everybody except Anthony and Officer Harold, uh, can, uh, vacate the premises. We're going in there, we're going in there, alright, but I was just letting the staff, uh, everybody, obviously Chief Moore.
He's like, he's in dinner, but he's looking.
Me too, yeah, I know, mine have hair.
Oh, you have a head.
I'm good.
Hey, you want a piece of?
Look, just like him goes, goes on with the, uh.
Alright, you want a piece of?